Please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that's the song, that's the pre-song, 230. For our guest speaker.
Mr. Terese?
We tend, we like to call him Terese, but Terese's good.
Terese, Terese.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
Welcome.
My name is Tony Terese and I'm the president of North Reading Dollars for Scholars, a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing financial assistance for students of North Reading pursuing an education beyond high school. This year marks our 52nd year of being, serving this town in North Reading. Over the last 51 years, North Reading Dollars for Scholars has awarded over $877,000 worth of scholarships to 1,969 high school and post-grad students. Just the last 10 years alone, we've awarded $292,400 in scholarships to 542 deserving students. North Reading Dollars for Scholars would not be able to do this if it wasn't for the generosity of the citizens of North Reading, which we greatly appreciate. Our annual phone-a-thon began last night, Sunday, March 8th, and will run through Thursday, March 12th. Tonight, we come before the selectmen of North Reading asking for your continued support and allowing the students to continue their support of raising money for the citizens of North Reading. I'd like to introduce the student reps today. Nick Day.
We'll vote on it.
Elizabeth Carlson. Nick Phillips. Nick Day, Mike McCauley, and Justin Hopp. These are student reps who have volunteered to serve at high schools. Some of them were recruited by John Bernat and some of them were recruited by new principal of, uh, John Bernat, his name is blank. It was the age I had to print, he was also in the board now. So, we thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight, and we thank you very much for your support always. Great pleasure to be here. And I should know one thing, this is my last year after 23 years of serving North Reading Dollars for Scholars, I'm going to resign. I think Mr. Prisco might take over my position next year, he said.
Funny guy. No, Mr. Delaney already admitted that he was going to take that for you.
Thank you very much.
If he's listening at home, he should be meeting with you soon to do the transition.
Yeah, I'm sure he will. I have to buy him a cup of coffee too. Thank you very much.
Okay. First of all, I'd like a motion to appoint Mr. Yule temporary clerk, because Mr. O'Leary isn't.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foti, second by Mr. Prisco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? I'm just going to have him to read first.
Oh, you want me to read it too?
You want to read the, uh, you want to read the proclamation?
Should I read the motion first?
Read the motion, then we'll read the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim the week of March 8th through the 12th, 2015, as North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yule, second by Mr. Foti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Mr. Yule, will you read the proclamation?
Yes, I'd be more than glad to. The proclamation reads as, "Whereas the North Reading Dollars for Scholars is a group of hard-working, dedicated individuals, and whereas the North Reading Dollars for Scholars members have devoted both time and talent to the difficult task of seeking scholarship funds for deserving students, and whereas North Reading Dollars for Scholars is planning its annual phone-a-thon for the week of March 8th through the 12th, 2015, where high school students will contact all North Reading homes by telephone, seeking pledges to the North Reading Dollars for Scholars Scholarship Fund. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of North Reading, do hereby proclaim the week of March 8th through the 12th, 2015, as North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week, and urge all citizens to open their hearts and their purses to the benefit of North Reading students who want to continue their education." To be signed by the Board of Selectmen, Chairman Robert Mosseri.
Thank you, Mr. Yule. Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Terese, I first do want to congratulate you on all the years you've put forward and what a great job you have done for this organization. I really do hope somebody does step up and take your position and continue on what you have put so much of your time and effort into. I do believe it's one of the best scholarships in the town that we offer and very, very important to our young men and women that are going off to school. The economy has been kind of up and down, but the tuitions continue to keep rising at record rates, so this does definitely help a lot of kids be able to make the, have the ability to attend college. So I congratulate you and congratulate all the students for stepping up and helping the organization. If you could just tell me, what is the online registration date?
It began already and it ends April 1st.
April 1st? Okay.
And we're having a fundraiser also at the Horseshoe Cafe, like we mentioned, Horseshoe Grill, excuse me, May 4th.
May 4th.
We're calling it the Shink of the Mind, because we didn't know our calendar was playing a trick with us, but it's May 4th at the Horseshoes. So if those of you cannot get over the phone and come out for dinner, that would be great for that night as well.
I'll put it in my calendar.
And we should congratulate the students that are here that have volunteered to participate, and I assume the other ones are going to be making the phone calls?
Well, there are students that are making the phone calls last night, and these students are going to make their phone calls tonight, somebody is going to go Century 21, somebody will go to the high school, but we'll be having students manning the phones, Century 21 tonight and in the high school tonight as well, through Thursday.
There we go.
Any other comments, questions, Mr. Yule?
Yes, Mr. Terese, you said, correct, if I'm pronouncing that right. I want to thank you for all the years that you put in. I think that many students have benefited from your program, and I think that the, uh, these students as well will be benefiting, and students in the future from the hard work that you laid down and moved things right along. So I thank you, and I'm sure that every parent and every student that has benefited or attempted to benefit appreciate all of your hard work. Thank you very much, Mr. Yule. Thank you very much, Charlie.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And behalf of the whole board, please thank you very much for your contribution.
Thank you. I thank all of you for allowing me to come over the last several years and putting up with me the last 23 years on the board. Have no room after tonight.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
We have a floor to take, Mr. Yule?
Would love that.
Yes.
Let's not, I want this question said.
I want to say so.
Good-looking people will file in behind you.
A great idea.
Is that right?
Should I put my hat on?
You can stand.
You have my wallet in my front pocket. And the chief is here.
Thank you. I catch your finger though. Prisco?
Nicholas.
Phillips?
Yes. Mike McCauley. Justin Hopp.
Do you copy the proclamation?
Did you put it back?
Let me take this, hang on, shake hands with.
Nick?
Nick. That's fine, you're going to be.
How's that? Should have shaved, Joe. I know.
Great.
Good cryptic, Nick.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
See you in the morning.
Take care. Good luck, guys and girls. No more pictures right there.
Okay, gentlemen, we have minutes, February 23rd, regular and executive session. Mr. Yule, do you have the packet there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 23rd, 2015, regular session minutes as written.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Yule, second by Mr. Foti, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We also have executive session for that evening. Mr. Yule?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 23rd, 2015, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yule, second by Mr. Foti. I wasn't sure it was you, my.
Forget me already.
Yeah, you can be gone a few months.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We also have the open session meetings of February 28th, which is our Saturday budget meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 28th, 2015, budget meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yule, second by Mr. Foti, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Anyone here for public comment?
Hi, good evening. So I stay close up on.
For the microphone.
I like a podium. Good evening, I'm Nancy Wolf, I'm actually the newly-elected chairperson for the North Reading 4th of July Committee. Unfortunately, I am here to let you know that 2015, we will not be having an event. It's really twofold, we do not have manpower. I kind of am the committee at the moment, and we have two people who are tentative to stay, and we just don't have the funds. That would be nice to come and let you know that we are not going to do it for 2015, but we are going to make a true effort to start fundraising now for 2016. So we'll be having a couple of events over the summertime, trying to put some people back in place, trying to get some folks on board, and really, the note I just gave to that's going to go in the paper, we're going to challenge the organizations in the town to actually fundraise for us. You don't have to be a member of the committee to do that, but if we could get the churches, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Masons, to do things for us, that would help. So we're going to try to go down that path and see if we can't make this happen in 2016.
Comments, Mr. Prisco?
Do you have a budget number that you are trying to achieve?
We really need about $20,000 to do it right, to do it right. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Mr. Yule?
I'm not going to be dunked?
Not, well, I, we could have just a special fundraiser to dunk you, that might actually help with the $20,000, I'm not sure.
Make it the whole thing?
But I want to thank you for stepping forward, because it's very important that we have a 4th of July festivities. It does unite the town, it does bring people together. It's a very difficult process to go through, which we, you and I, have spoken about, and it probably is a wise move to postpone it one year and see if we can pull something together as a whole community, because it's very valuable. I honestly, I honestly believe that, so.
And that's the path we're going to take. The other thing I did mention, we are still pursuing becoming 501-3C as well, so I actually have that process, finally got paperwork back from the IRS, so we'll continue with that and get our letter of determination and register with the state. So that might help a little bit as well to lose some dollars in terms of some corporate sponsorship.
I just, I wanted to go real quick, as sad as I am not to hear that's not happening this year, I'm happy to hear that you're going to try and continue it going forward from this year. One of the things I have to say is, you know, I remember 12 years ago, 12 or 13 years ago, looking at a house in North Reading when I first moved here, and it just so happened to be that weekend, and we, my family and I went, even though we weren't living here, and it was just, it was great, and it was probably one of the reasons why we decided to move here, so I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you so much.
And feel, please feel free to come back here and give us an update, might get a little more attention, and hopefully those that are listening this evening, if they're interested in volunteering to try to get this thing back off the ground. Do you have contact information?
I do, I'm actually, I'm registered with the town, but yes, my contact information is available. I can give anybody my cell number, you can call me anytime.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's 978-764-1179, and my last name is Wolf, like the animal with an E. My husband hates when I say that, he's. And again, you know, you really, really need to focus on fundraising. I don't need help that day, I don't need hands that day, you don't have to sit in a little carnival booth with me. Really, I need help from January to, you know, that whole December, January, April timeframe. I need to make that money well in advance of the event.
Of course.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's just exactly 6:15, so we have a show cause hearing scheduled for Tedeschi Food Shop. Is there a motion for that?
I can see one.
I think just we should read the.
No, this is the motion to.
Yeah.
I don't have.
I just opened the hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. I will open the hearing. We have representatives from Tedeschi Food Shop too this evening. Will you come to the podium, name and address?
My name is Chris Pendleton. Home address is 3 River Road, Tuchray, Mass. My wife and I own the Tedeschis, she couldn't be at night unfortunately. Communion to my daughter that probably can't help with, even though she's the manager of records, I couldn't, she couldn't be at night.
Mr. Murphy? Chief Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On January 15th, 2015, members of the North Reading Police Detective Unit conducted alcohol compliance checks at 202 North Street, Tedeschi's Food Mart. Received a report, which I'd like to read into the record. I'll summarize Detective Thomas Hatch's report, that on Thursday, January 15th, himself and Lieutenant Romeo were conducting alcohol compliance checks while using an underage person. This effort was part of a statewide grant that was advertised in our local newspaper, the North Reading Transcript, on that same day, as well as advertised on our social media, our website, and the North Reading Patch, that we were going to be doing alcohol compliance checks at, at least within the next three weeks. The underage person was given a $20 bill and told to attempt to purchase a six-pack of Bud Light cans. The person was instructed to leave the premises if a state identification card or license was requested by the cashier. Approximately 6:40, the underage person walked into the Tedeschi's Food Shop. At 6:42, the person exited the store with a six-pack of Bud Light cans. It was not placed in a bag. There was a receipt for a purchase of alcohol, the amount of $7.29, and the receipt showed store number 416, which was the store's address, date and time as well. The underage person was asked who sold him the alcohol, they described the only cashier who was in the building. Detective Hatch and Lieutenant Romeo walked back inside the store and informed the cashier they had sold alcohol to a minor. The cashier identified himself and was immediately apologetic and upset with himself. At that point, they did inform the clerk to, he could notify his manager that they would be receiving a summons to appear here before you at some point in the future.
Mr. Prisco?
Have we had any previous issues at this location?
Not in the last five years, to my knowledge.
Mr. Gilbrough?
Mr. Chairman, we reviewed the files for the three establishments that were forwarded by the chief, and we did not find anything in the file for this location.
Are all your employees tip certified?
They are. My newest one, I just got actually in today, or a couple of days ago, she's the replacement gentleman that was there, he was terminated, not only because he failed to sting, but he grossly failed doing his job at the same time, instead of using the tools in front of him. The computer's automated to ask for a date every time you sell beer, you have to enter a six-digit birthdate. He was too busy watching Netflix on his iPad and ignoring everything else. He wasn't doing any of his job functions. He'd have just been paying hens to do his tasks, he wouldn't like it or pass this thing without a question, because he doesn't have any history of doing anything like that. We have never had any incidences in the past, like I said with police, other than helping chocolate things and a collision of the building recently. But, other than that, he just didn't do his job, so he was terminated immediately.
Are there video cameras in the building?
There are.
Mr. Foti?
How long have you and your wife been on the business?
Uh, we've been there almost five years now. We took over, uh, May of 2010, uh, May 3rd, we took over the business. I was probably here almost three years to the date, when we did the license transfer, and then the ABCC took a couple of months to finalize that date for. I also own another store in Hudson, Mass. I've been there for 13 years, with one minor incident, again, but that was 10 years ago now. And that was, we actually only got a written warning because the, unlike, they followed the ABCC guidelines down there, they didn't, the clerk prevented, didn't present a fake ID, but gave a birthdate that was in code, which is, you know, it's against the laws, against the laws entering. So we, they were, we just gave them written warning in that case.
Mr. Foti?
I actually have a question for the chief, if I may. Chief, can you just, real quickly, just, and I don't want to prolong this any longer than we have to, but just give a quick explanation of what they do when they go. So if the clerk asks for a birthdate, they have to give an actual birthdate, they can't give a fake date, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so if, so if the underage person goes in, and again, the clerk acts either for an ID, or even verbally asks for a date, they have to give their.
Hey, if you ask them for their birth hasn't happened, they have to tell the truth.
Right, okay.
But it typically is an ID. If they ask for an ID, they say, "I don't have one," then.
I got you. Okay.
That's what the whole compliance, we want them to ask, and so if we have them running to anybody, just ask them for their birth.
Okay. Thanks. But you have to make my point, I meant, the point is, the thing was advertised, it, right? Thank you.
We're not looking to trick anyone.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Prisco?
This is a tough one, your first, this is your really first offense. Typically, we do suspend a license, and I'm not sure in this case, you know, if that's really in the best interest of this particular shop. It seems like they got the right securities in place, and this is just obviously one employee, but, you know, we obviously have to make a recommendation, and what's being recommended now, we have a motion in front of us to suspend. So I guess as a board, we have to discuss and decide is that what we want to do. So, we should come to some kind of conclusion.
Yep. Mr. Yule?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you for being candid that you have another location and you've had a violation about 10 years ago, is that right? And you've owned that approximately?
It's been 13 years, it's, it kind of runs together.
So, I mean, that's something you didn't have to say, you didn't have to say that, but I appreciate you being, being candid in that regard. And, and I think that, uh, since you've owned the store, Joe asked a question I was about to ask, you've owned it for about five years here in North Reading, and this is the first violation. And I concur with Mike, I mean, normally, we don't like to play around with the, with our youth getting, being able to buy alcoholic beverages or any other kind of non-farious stuff, but, uh, so, it is a tough one. Mike, I agree with that. And I'm inclined to think that a warning is, a strong warning is appropriate in this case. I'm inclined to think that.
Mr. Prisco?
Chief, if I could ask you a question. So in the past, you know, I haven't had to deal with a lot of these in the last five years, I think it's maybe my third one. In every case that I, we've done at least before me, we have suspended a license. Have we ever not suspended a license for a short period of time, or have we ever done a warning? What are the, what are the options, and do you have a recommendation?
I can't say in the past, before me being chief, whether or not there was a warning issued. Since I've been chief, the standard's been a three-day suspension.
Okay.
Mr. Foti?
Chief, do you recall the circumstances? I know we did one recently in the last five or six months, I believe.
Yes.
And do you remember that, it's, in an effort to be fair across the board, did they have any, did they have any previous in the last five years that, okay?
That's kind of, yeah, that's fine.
I think it's been the board's policy to, on our first offense, to suspend a license for three days. Mr. Prisco?
I'd like to make a recommendation, oh, I'd like to make a motion.
I think Mr. Yule has a motion written.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Do you have to modify it differently?
No, we can fill in, there's no days in there. We'll fill that in.
That's why I would like to make the recommendation for the, you know, we'll do the three days.
Okay.
I'd like to recommend the dates of April 16, 17, and 18. It is over the start of the NHL playoffs. I think that's probably a good time to do it. I think that's, you know, when anyone else is coming forward, I think that's a good time period to do it. You know, you're going to feel a little of the pain, because that's a very popular time for people to purchase liquor. So I'd like the board to consider and recommend that we pick those three days, and that's the reason why I'm picking those days.
If I can, I don't know whether this is possible. I know there's one party that's not here today, because they asked for an extension. If, I don't know, I'm assuming that the three days is standard, so they'll be affected too, I don't know. But if they have a case that lowers theirs, would this be reconsidered on my behalf? Could that be, I don't know what, I guess they hired an attorney, and I don't have wherewithal, I'm not a big multimillionaire company like they are.
I believe the extension was requested because their attorney wasn't available.
That's correct.
Right. We treat everything, everybody the same.
They won't be treated any less than you, I can guarantee you that.
Yeah.
At least I'm willing to speak for myself.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, if we're going to set a precedent, in this case, it would probably be with you, but we don't want to do that, we want to maintain some type of continuity, and so we're not going to set a precedent with anybody else. I'm pretty sure on that.
The message is very clear, right? We have a no tolerance policy associated with selling liquor to minors. And, you know, and as the owner, you're responsible for your employees, and I know you took action, and other people in the past have taken action, and terminated employees or done some things, but I think it's an appropriate punishment, and, uh, we hope that, you know, the message gets across to all, all the, uh, locations in town selling liquor that, uh, we don't tolerate selling liquor to minors. Mr. Yule?
If I, if I may, work off of what Mike was saying about the dates coinciding with the NHL playoffs, is that right? I don't know, maybe we don't need to do that, maybe we don't need to have those dates. I mean, we're going to take three days. Why, can't think of the right words to say, but why make it harder than, than we have to on the establishment in this case? Just simply say that it's three days, and pick three days out of random rather than to tie it into a special event.
Well, past practice is when we pick the days, we pick them in.
Succession.
In succession.
Right.
You know, my philosophy on picking the dates, Mr. Yule, is that, you, even though this gentleman, his operation seemed to have their act together, they just have, you know, this was an anomaly, a breakdown of one particular employee, but the fact of the matter is that individual, if, if you sold it to this, or if he sold this alcohol to our person that was working for the town, then he probably sold it to many other minors, and we're lucky that we didn't get a report that that minor that he sold the alcohol to killed somebody in this town. So, the reason why is, I want to send the message not only to you and your business, but to every business that's going, that's in this town to get the message, that this is a serious act, and that we're thankful that nobody got hurt. But it, it could have easily gotten bad. It could have been bad for the underage person that purchased alcohol, it could have been bad for my family who could have got killed by this individual after drinking that alcohol.
Okay.
So I say, we stick to the severity of it, and we should pick a weekend where they will feel it in the pocketbook. You know, that's just the way it is, because after him, we have East Coast Liquors coming up, and we shouldn't be.
we have East Gate Liquors coming up, and we shouldn't be any easier on them. They've been in this community a long time, and they should know better. So, and then it has, and we have a couple more coming, and they should all know better. They've been here in this community. This gentleman's had this business in this community for only five years, I think he's done a fairly good job. I'd love to give him a break on this one, but we can't. But we're going to send the message strong and clear. We should be strong and clear in our message, because this is a serious act, and we've got, we're very fortunate that your, that your employee didn't have anybody get hurt in this town.
I can't argue that point.
Mr. Steele.
Yes, so, we have, it's, it's three days, second day.
We have consensus on the dates.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with dates, I just have to write them down. What were they in?
16, 17.
We have majority.
You okay with that, Joe?
April 16, 17?
Yep, and 18, yeah. It's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay, okay. All right, let's see, close of business day.
Am I right?
It finishes up here with, it must be delivered, the private license must be delivered at the close of the business day on, that would be the 15th?
If it's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, how do we get our license back for Sunday?
It'd be in possession of the police department, you'd pick it up any hour.
Okay, so that would be the 15th, right?
Correct.
And picked up on, it says, finishes up with picked up on, they can pick it up any time that they want, correct?
It's available on, no, it's available on 19.
Available on 19, okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman. I move to suspend for three consecutive days on April 16th, 17th, and 18th, 2015, the wine and malt beverage license of Tedeschi Food Mart, 202 North Street, and that the license must be delivered to the North Reading Police Department at the close of the business, close of business on April 15th, 2015, and picked up at the police station on April 19th, 2015.
Do we hear a second?
Second for conversation.
Mr. Yule, I just want to make sure you said the 16th, 17th, and 18th of April.
Yes, April 16th, 17th, and 18th, 2015.
And license dropped off, instead of close of business on the 15th, before liquor sales would begin on the 16th? Is that, instead of having a closer come over there at midnight, and I drop it off at seven in the morning? Before the sale, open of business, open of business?
That's fair.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another show cause hearing, 6:45, so let's see what else we can go on.
Excuse me.
We have, no, we have a license renewal update.
Oh, we do? Sure. Mr. Chairman.
Number eight.
We had, we had one pending item, which was that the license holder was required to obtain a civil fingerprint, civil fingerprinting review by the police department. I'm informed that that took place last week, and that brings us into full compliance amongst all of our license holders for renewals from December to January 2014 to 2015. And no further actions required by the board.
We have enough time to talk about the Kinder Morgan project. I'm sorry, Joe.
I'm sorry, the bills? Let's get to January bills.
Because we are at, we are at 6:35, unless you think the Kinder Morgan thing will only take 15 minutes?
It shouldn't take very long.
I'm happy to, my intention was to show the board the maps that we've had put together by the planning department.
You want a little more time then?
And, and then to review the letter. We could do that in two steps, I leave it to the board.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we have 15 minutes, so, now we get started on it, and then we'll come back. If there's nothing else, we'll build on that.
Right, I was going to suggest that while he's getting this booted up, maybe we could do the bills while he's going through the process.
While Michael is getting ready, we have a motion to approve the...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the bill, legal bills for January 2015 in the amount of $9,795.16 as follows. Copman and Page, PC General, $6,375.16. Copman and Page, PC Labor, $3,420, for a total of $9,795.16.
Second.
Mr. Prisco.
Are we, are we going to continue to use legal counsel to rectify the Rock construction situation? I mean, I still see that's getting legal bills on that, and I think, you know, a chance of getting that money from them, I thought were pretty slim. So I was just curious if we're going to continue to keep burning money on that.
I believe that the bill that you see in there was in response to a request we got from a, either a creditor or the bankruptcy court that required a filing.
Okay.
I don't believe we're actively, we are not actively pursuing it at this point in time, it's merely to maintain our place in that proceeding.
Mr. Yule.
Yes, what is the Rock thing? Is that something from a while ago?
It's the, not the CBS, Walgreens Construction. Remember the staging fill on, on the road, and they had details out there.
Okay.
And, and the Rock, it's, not the whole name, is the...
Oh, that's the name of the company?
It's the company that we feel should be, should have paid those details.
Okay, thank you. We have to, we have to vote on this?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as we indicated, we were waiting to take up the request of Kinder Morgan to survey town-owned land for receipt of graphic information system data relative to the route in North Reading. As was provided in the Dropbox folder for tonight's meeting, we have maps that show a series of scenarios all depicting the route. The first map that you have up here starts from the northwest and proceeds to the southeast, Wilmington down to Linfield, largely following the national grid powerline easement across that avenue of town. You can see the red parcels are all owned, are all parcels affected by the route, whether it be that it's an area where there's an easement that's being requested, or whether it be an area where there would actually be construction occurring. So this first map shows all of the parcels that would be impacted by the route. The second map here is showing just the town-owned parcels that are impacted, although it looks like it's... The map you see here shows the, the outlay of wetlands, which is the green, in relation to the route here, again, from northwest to southeast, as well as conservation land, whether it be town-owned or with a private or other party having a conservation restriction on the property. Again, you can see here that there are parcels that are impacted based on the route that's been proposed. And the final map here just shows non-town-owned governmental land, for example, whether it be state-owned land or the US Postal Facility, other governmental-owned parcels in relationship to the route, there is an impact with the US Postal Facility, as well as, I believe, a state-owned parcel on the south east side.
Is that the enigmatic gray?
That's correct, yes, the gray. And I apologize, but it appears a town-owned, a map that shows all of the parcels didn't, it seems to have all, all of the privately-owned parcels as well. If you refer to the Excel spreadsheet that was included in the packet for tonight's meeting, you'll see the listing of ownership, and I believe there are nine or so parcels that are identified. We also went through and classified the parcels according to the zoning for the parcel and the type of use for the parcel to give the board an idea of the type of parcels that are impacted. And of course, it ranged from public use, conservation land, simply undevelopable land. There were a number of residential properties that were impacted, and of course, commercial use along the corridor as well. There were certainly a variety of types of parcels that were impacted. Again, for consideration in the draft letter that's in the Dropbox folder tonight is a letter to Kinder Morgan that would address their request to survey town-owned parcels of land, as well as a policy position for the board to take with regard to the surveying taking place on public ways.
Michael, is there any private-owned land as impacted by this that does not already have an easement for the power lines? In other words, I noticed there were a couple deviations in the route, getting across the river.
There are, Mr. Chairman, there were, when we, when Slekman Yule and I met with the representative of Kinder, of Kinder Morgan in, I think it was October, they indicated that the route did deviate from the powerline easement, particularly in the area of its intersection with Haverhill Street. And I think that there may also be impacts that take place in the vicinity of, potentially in the vicinity of Damon Street, as well as the small section on the northwestern portion of the route, where you see the number of small parcels are impacted. There may be some impact up there as well. We'd have to look at deed restrictions to know that for sure. But just looking at the number of parcels that are there, there clearly are private property impacts that take place.
That are new, meaning that those properties don't have an easement for the electric?
I believe that there are a handful, at least, that would be new to my immediate knowledge, and again, those are in the vicinity of Haverhill Street. I suspect there may be impacted parcels in that northwestern portion of town as well, near the Wilmington line.
Mr. Prisco.
If you could just briefly explain to me, so on the west side of town, I see a lot of the red marks up and back, up and, you know, up and down, up and down. Is, what's the rationale for that? Because I thought they were only whaling the gas through if, if this was going to happen through North Reading.
From what we can tell, it could be that they're deviating from the powerline easement in order to get there because of what might be wetland or other characteristics on the ground that make it difficult to construct. I don't know. There are private parcels that are impacted because they already have an easement to the powerline, where the powerline doesn't actually own the land, they just have an easement to get through. The town happens to be one of them, the powerline, national grid has an easement across the back of the public works facility, but they don't own the parcel. And again, that's the case in some of the smaller parcels you see in the neighborhood to the northwest side of the map there on the Wilmington line.
Yeah, because it just seems to me that, you know, the pipes are going back and forth, so there's a lot of loops, a series of loops. So is that by design, or is that because they are planning to whale gas into those areas? I'm just curious if you guys know. I didn't...
No, do you mean for service?
Yeah.
No, they're, we're not aware of any intention to tap a service off the route.
It just doesn't make sense to me why they, they are trying to whale the gas with so many loops.
The mic...
Top left-hand side.
Yeah, I'm looking at that, and...
I don't think...
I don't see, that's, that, I don't, the red isn't the pipeline, the dotted thing...
Oh, it isn't?
No, no, the dotted thing, line is the pop line, pipeline.
Oh, thank you.
So, sorry.
Runs through some of the red lines.
My apologies. My apologies.
The red is the property lines of others, right?
Well, no, because I, I was reading this little key that they gave me, and it says pipeline parcel restriction, so I just assumed that was the pipeline itself, but now I see it.
The parcels actually show, the red lines show the outline of any parcel directly impacted by the route.
Thank you.
So you see that they extend off of the actual location of the pipeline there.
I couldn't see that in my key, so I apologize.
There's a deviation crossing Route 28, as I recall, right?
It's a slight northeasterly deviation right there, and the same thing happens to the southeasterly, if you're going northwest to southeast, right by Haverhill Street down here.
But I, I think that the, crossing Main Street, was that your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I believe, I believe the power lines go straight across, but they show the gas taking a deviation.
They, they may be crossing one side of the, the line to the other side of the line to get across. Meaning, if the, I don't know what the width of the power lines are, but they could be going down the right side and need to cross over to the left side in order to cross 28 effectively.
Within the easement.
Within the easement, yes.
So they have, Kinder Morgan has provided the information. We intend to post these maps on the town website for residents to be able to peruse. Again, the board does have a listing of affected property owners, including the town, in tonight's packet and in the Dropbox file. And finally, in response to the board's request, we do have in the packet, the folder with the packet for tonight's meeting, a letter that's been reviewed by town council to go to Kinder Morgan with regard to their request to survey property and their surveying within the public ways in North Reading.
We'll put this back on. We had some time in between the public hearings on liquor, Steve, so we're going to table the rest of the discussion until later in the meeting. I guess we're getting close to about three or four minutes.
So that's MacArthur Road, right, up in the left-hand side, up in that area?
Uh, yeah, behind the Main Street there? That would be correct.
Off of Linwood.
Yeah, hold on, let me just, see, Linwood, yeah, you get MacArthur Road and Cold Spring.
Cold Spring.
Right off of Linwood, yeah.
So I think what's important, too, is now that we have a complete list of all the properties and the owners that, although some of them may not be engaged in this process yet, they certainly will be, we can send notices out to them. Now we just follow up, now we know who's being impacted, including all the town parcels that we didn't have up until now.
What's the total number of parcels, do we know?
Yeah, it's on the spreadsheet, Mike.
They didn't total them up, but it's got to be somewhere in the vicinity of 75, I would say.
Oh, yeah.
Can you get that a little bit?
Yeah.
But what, what was the number nine? Was that, had to do with...
Nine town-owned parcels.
Nine town-owned parcels, okay.
Is it our intention to post the list of properties and property owners on the website?
We can discuss that.
We were intending to post the map, I mean, certainly, it is public information, we could post it, it's just a board process.
Makes it easy for people to observe and communicate a little bit more quickly. Someone else to check on the website, tell the neighborhood, by the way.
How many was it, Mike?
I got about 50.
50? And I don't think we've had contact with 50 people yet.
It's probably, sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's probably a good idea to, to post them. It's kind of a, from my end, I would say it's an obligatory action on our part to let them know what's going on as best as we can, without any influence, just let them look at it, and then they can react accordingly.
That's why I rhetorically asked the question, if we were going to, I think we should.
Set me up.
I set you up.
Okay, it's...
It's that time.
Just about 6:45, we have a show cause hearing for East Gate Liquors. Start off with the chief market. Steve, just so you know, before, on the show cause hearing for Tedeschi Food Shops, we have suspended their license for three days, beginning April 16th, 17th, and 18th, 18th is the Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thursday, January 15th, 2015, members of the North Reading Police Detective Unit conducted an alcohol compliance check at 12 Main Street, known as East Gate Liquors. I received a report, which I'm going to summarize here for you this evening, from Detective Thomas Hatch. On Thursday, January 15th, both himself and Lieutenant Romeo were conducting alcohol compliance checks while using an underage person. This compliance check was part of a statewide grant that was advertised in our local newspaper, the North Reading Transcript, on the same day, as well as advertised on our social media, on our website, and the North Reading Patch previous week. During the compliance check, the underage person was given a $20 bill and told to attempt to purchase a six-pack of Bud Light cans... Approximately 6:07, underage person walked into East Gate Liquor Store, and approximately five minutes later, the person exited the store with a brown bag and a six-pack of Bud Light cans. Also in the brown bag was a receipt for purchased alcohol in the amount of $8.99. Receipt showed the same date, registered number two, and clerk's number. The officers then asked the underage person who sold him the alcohol. They described the person as the only cashier up front of the store. Lieutenant Romeo and Detective Hatch were in, and the underage person walked in with them and identified the cashier. The officers informed the cashier that he sold alcohol to a minor and responded by saying, the clerk responded by saying, "Well, he looks 21." Lieutenant Romeo then asked for store manager, who did identify himself as Mr. Schultz. I just want to note that some things that were concerning about the clerk, even after the officers identified that he had sold to a person underage 21. As the lieutenant was explaining the process over the phone to Mr. Schultz's manager, the clerk had asked if we were paying the underage person any money. The officers identified the tone as being confrontational and loud. The detective then asked the clerk what he was referring to, and he replied, "Do you pay him? Does he get paid by the police for doing this?" The officers then advised him that his line of questioning was inappropriate for someone who was subject to arrest for procuring alcohol to a minor, and he should concentrate on requiring identification from that point forward. And the officers did provide a copy of the violation to the clerk, to the manager, and was told that they would be receiving a hearing at some point in the future.
Any, I assume, gentleman from East Gate?
My name is Dan Walls, I'm the general manager of East Gate Liquors.
My name is Paul Robinson, I'm the manager of East Gate in North Reading.
We should have asked the chief before we stepped back. What's the history here?
We've had no violations that I'm aware of in the last five years that happened.
Mr.-
Mr. Chairman, again, to board's request and standard operating procedures, we do go through our files, we did find a violation, the disposition of which I see dated May 15, 1984, so it certainly was a while ago. And it appears that in lieu of suspension, the establishment opted to pay a fine of $1,253.16 to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Again, that was 1984.
Questions for the board? Mr. Prisco.
I would just, curious about the rationale for the tone of the clerk. Maybe you could just give us a little background.
Actually, the clerk, 64-year-old gentleman who has worked for us for six years, trustworthy, this is the first I've actually heard of this, I had no idea. On a, he usually is very, very easygoing, gets along with all the other employees, he's tips-trained. It's shocking to me that he responded that way. It's not like him. I had no idea, absolutely no idea.
So was he the only one on duty that night, or was it-
No, we carried four people on every night. Usually two cashiers, two people on the floor. Manager is one of them, of course. It's been drilled into their heads to ask for IDs. With a store of our size, there's 5,000 people that we serve each week, and it's a bad thing to happen, really. It just, I would never expected it from this gentleman, and he's been terminated, and he knows that it was his own stupid, stupid, you know, stupidity.
Mr. Deal.
If I may ask, who was the manager at the time?
That was a gentleman by the name of Bill Schultz, who was a night manager for us. Looks two, three nights a week.
Well, the reason why I asked the question, in lieu of you hearing about the reaction by your employee at the time, as described by the police chief, I think he would have or should have-
Told us.
Mentioned that to you. If he had been here, he would have been able to answer that question.
I just, we had no knowledge, neither one of us.
Mr. Prisco.
The major concern for me in this particular case is that you are such a large store, like you said, and your volume is far greater than some of our small convenience stores, which means your security measures and the due diligence that your staff should go through is far greater than anyone else. Because you do provide a lot of alcohol that goes in throughout our community. So to me, this is a severe incident. And so maybe you could just give us a quick explanation of the process that your staff is required to take. Not because of the law, but what you have in place. What are the standing operating procedures for your staff members when they're at the register cashing people out?
It all starts, obviously, with the tips training. You build off of that, obviously, just keeping, putting into them, and I can't say it anymore, but instilling in regards to how serious and how you have to take that in your own hands in regards to taking responsibility. Obviously, get the support of all the managers around, but ultimately, they're at the forefront, and we're still responsible, obviously, for them. But they're at the forefront, and they just, you know, the training has to be, there is no question about gray area, there's black and white, and this gentleman did something wrong. Obviously, we terminated him, and that's just not the-
What is the training? What is the process? Everyone required 100% ID checks?
Yes, correct.
Oh, you do 100% ID check?
Well, we do, anybody under 40 years of age, we use a timer, anybody under age 40 years old, obviously, we just use that as a gauge. We don't take out-of-state licenses, we just take Massachusetts, and that eliminates a lot of possibilities for fraudulence in regards to, you know, changing somebody's license from out of state, which you wouldn't have access to with a book in regards to showing what's at their back. So, thank you.
We also have, it's posted on the door as you walk in the store, I don't know if you've seen it, "Under 21, keep out, police take notice." And on every single register inside the store hanging, we have "Under 40, please have their ID ready." We have data checkers at the register to take a picture of the license in person. We have 16 cameras in the store, closed circuit video. To be faced with something like this, with all these procedures I would go through, for this gentleman to do this, it just-
I understand.
Mr. Deal.
Yep. With a policy of 40 years or older, okay, someone that's under 21, I mean, that's a huge disparity to not have asked for ID. I mean, it's huge. I mean, it's not like they looked like they were over 40, they couldn't possibly, you know. But that's a huge disparity at that point, and that, to me, appears to be very negligent on that, unfortunately, on that individual's action, at your expense, unfortunately, so.
Mr. O'Leary, you're sitting in the quiet.
No, I just think it's, you know, it's unfortunate, it's a unfortunate set of circumstances, and East Gate Liquors and the family that have owned it for years have been good contributing members of the community here. Obviously, they have some good safeguards in place, given the fact that there hasn't been any occurrence since 1984, so I think that's something to be considered. Nonetheless, I think the fact that the employee didn't portray the establishment in the best light, you know, to the police department, with the facts as they were presented as unfortunate, and again, what you did with the employees, certainly your choice, you know, it can't be ignored. Again, I think the establishment still have the opportunity to pay a fine and lower suspension, you know, which is probably rather than close, so I mean, we shouldn't necessarily expect establishments to be closed. So I mean, there should be some sort of penis to be paid here, but again, I think there should be some recognition of the fact that they do have some pretty strong safeguards in place, and as evidenced by the fact that there hasn't been an occurrence since 1984, and we do these checks twice annually, so it should be without consequence, but it is noteworthy.
Mr. Foley.
Can you correct me if I'm, did we transfer the license about a year ago? Wasn't all these yours?
No.
Oh, I'm thinking, I'm sorry. Yep, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Mr. Deal.
Yeah, in listening to what Steve was saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, that taking into consideration that rather than closing, a fine would be appropriate, is that-
No, no, they have the choice of paying a fine to the ABCC.
We have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, there's nothing to do with us. We impose the fine and whatever that is, then there's a formula that the ABCC uses to-
Right, okay.
-to allow them to pay a fine in lieu of suspension. It goes to the state, not to us.
So if we were to suspend them for a period of time, then they can go to the ABCC and challenge it? Is that what you're saying?
Challenge it, basically, pay a fine in lieu of suspension. That's an option that the state law provides for.
Okay.
And based on what we were told, that's what they chose to do back in-
Way back in 84.
1984, something like that.
84.
Good to hear.
I think we'd have to, from my perspective, we have to treat this just like the previous one.
Yes, yes.
And again, to Michael's point, that, you know, they're a large-volume shop in town in relation to some of the other ones, so it's important that they have these safeguards in place. And to me, it's almost more egregious that it happens in a smaller place than it is in a larger place, because there's less traffic, and there's more opportunity to check them and take the time and be a little, as diligent as they should be. But when you've got, you know, 5,000 patrons going through there a week, and no occurrence since 1984, you know, it's unfortunate to occur.
What are the wishes of the board? Mr. Prisco.
I'd like to stay consistent with our previous decision we made, so I recommend the same three-day suspension over the same time period.
Mr. Deal.
Yeah, I would concur on that, you know. Part of the thought in listening to all this, and I, you know, I think back to the previous store, where they have options, they sell groceries and alcohol, whereas pretty much they just sell alcohol and beverage and some chips and stuff like that. This is a greater impact on them, asking them to close for three days, than it almost is for the, for the smaller store in this case. That being said, you know, we more or less said that we're going to have a policy, unwritten or not, that three days is pretty much the norm for this type of offense, so that's where I would go.
Well, we also, the police department actually puts a notice out that this is going to happen, and it's done towards the year, so I mean, it's, it shouldn't be a surprise anyway.
Yeah, I guess that's the other question, I mean, were you aware that they were going to be doing the sting operation?
Not at all, no. The ABCC does have a scanning policy, they have it posted on the general website, showing that they do compliance for all year, for out of state.
It's important, because again, the chief and the police department, you know, go to great lengths to ensure that everybody is aware, so maybe you should buy the transcript.
They sell it.
I know, you sell it, but maybe you should read it. Yeah, but, you know, because again, we're not looking to, the policy isn't to go out there and catch anybody, it's just to make sure you're in compliance, let you know that during a certain timeframe, checks are going to be made. And I think there's adequate notice and fair play.
I think you made a good point, as far as our economic impact, as far as when we close for three days, what it's going to cost us, you know, as far as people not working, just everything in general is just, it's a disaster. It really is.
Well, as I said to the previous body, we treat this particular issue with great concern, and we want to get the message out. And we have a lot of liquor establishments, you know, whether they're just beer and wine or a couple liquor stores, that it's important to the community that we enforce the law. Mr. Foley.
So one of the things I said earlier about another store having other means and you having 5,000 customers a week and all that, my fluff on that is you should be much more careful than another store that doesn't do that. That's all you, that's all you do. But that's all you do. So I think it's more of a concern when a straight liquor store has this problem as opposed to a convenience store, maybe that may not have, every single person who walks in that door is there for one reason only, that's, or mostly one reason only, is to buy liquor, as opposed to cigarettes or candy or something like that.
Mr. Prisco.
Yeah, so that individual that no longer works for you, he was working for how many hours that evening? Four hours?
Four hours, two days.
So over four hours, he probably sold to maybe a dozen underage people, based on the lack of following the process, maybe more. And it goes back to what you heard me say earlier, the severity of the issue, and what could have happened in our community, of what, whose family could have been impacted because the underage person was drinking that alcohol in your parking lot, and then took off and drove in the car. I mean, we could run all these million scenarios all night long, but the bottom line is, we have to be pretty clear on our message, and we have to stay, I believe it's a board, we have to stay consistent with what we decide to do. I do applaud you, though, that you do 100% ID check on anybody that you consider 40 or less. I think that's a wonderful thing, and I wish the rest of the alcohol, the people in town that have alcohol license would do the same. I think it's a very, very great process, process to have in place, but in this case, it failed you, and it's unfortunate, but I'm going to stand by my recommendation, and I hope the board members will support me.
Any other comments, questions, anything else? Do you want to take a motion? Mr. Prisco has proposed three days effective-
April 16, 17, 18.
Do we have to turn, make a motion to turn it back to him, or should I just do it?
I'll leave it up to Mr. O'Leary.
Why don't we finish it off?
Yeah, okay. Three days. Oops, that's for 19.
I want to pick up on this, no?
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to suspend for three consecutive days on April 16, 17, and 18, 2015, the all-alcohol package store license of East Gate Liquors, 12 Main Street, and that the license must be delivered to the North Reading Police Department at the close of business day of April 15, 2015, and picked up at the police station on April 19, 2015.
Your motion by Mr. Yul, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Prisco. Any further discussion?
Just, again, I think, I go back and forth, but I think it has, this particular establishment has a pretty good track record, a long number of years since 1984 since a previous violation, and I think they have some pretty good safeguards in place, and they just had an unfortunate incident with one employee. I think the economic impact is pretty significant in relation to the three days. I wouldn't have been opposed to a two-day suspension in this particular case, but if it's the wish of the majority of the board, I'll go along with the motion as it stands. But if someone is in favor of a friendly amendment of two days, I'd be more than happy to make it, but if there isn't a second, I won't bother.
Mr. Deal.
Before you came in, we were pretty adamant about our position with the other establishment, and I would feel very hypocritical if I were to change our viewpoint. establishment and I would feel very hypocritical if I were to change our viewpoint. I will say that I'm glad they can go to the ABCC and have a fine in lieu of the penalty that we're putting forth, because I would think that we, as a board, would have to really look at what we do in these situations and create a policy to address these types of situations, because the impact, as I mentioned earlier, on them is significantly greater than it would have on a store like Tedeschi's, who can still continue to sell some product that they would not. So fortunately, I think they can go to the ABCC and address the issue. So that's the only reason I'm staying with this.
It's just that the fine in lieu of suspension is based upon revenue, you know, so it's pro rata, based on their daily and weekly revenue, monthly revenues. So that if Tedeschi were to do the same thing, again, their fine would be this big as opposed to this big. But to Mr. Foley's point, you know, their livelihood is made on this exclusively. So I mean, the penalty is severe, no matter what. But I think we don't necessarily have to be uniform across the board, depending upon the types of establishments, but I wasn't here for that discussion. It's okay.
It was, I think, it's almost like we have, the consensus is that we have a minimum standard here of offense of three days. It seems that that's what the consensus of the board is. Now, we can change that anytime, obviously, but that wouldn't go well over with some of the people that have come before us in the past, so.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Gentlemen, good. Hopefully, we won't see you back here in a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Discuss town-owned land. Joe?
Well, I, just to give you kind of sense of what's going on, I asked the town administrator to put this on the agenda probably three months ago, but unfortunately, weather and all that causes to push it off till tonight. I had a resident in the town who asked me about some town-owned land that they would like to potentially purchase from the town for development purposes. And Mr. Brogan is here tonight to discuss it, so.
Yeah, it actually came without my folder. I don't know any number or anything like that, but on Cedar Street.
Excuse me, please state your name.
Mike Brogan, thirty-five Cedar Street, North River. It's a ten thousand square foot piece of property at the end of Cedar Street that abuts my property. And I was just, the town owns it and I'd like to acquire.
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Foley, do you see this is acquired so you can develop?
That would be, I
Well, eventually, I wouldn't mind developing. It's just shy of two acre property and I need ten thousand square feet to make it a buildable lot. At one time in the past, it was supposed to be a subdivision called Cedar Hill Estates. And the gentleman who was developing the property had specifically put this piece of property where it's located to go with the property that I actually bought. Back when the, I'm not sure of the year, they took down Chelsea Stadium and he ended up putting it as fill in one of the lots. And then he got caught.
I think that comes under Mr. Foley.
I know firsthand that that probably wasn't the smartest thing.
Yeah.
That's your jurisdiction there.
They shut the project down. And a piece of property that I actually bought was someone who already owned property right there where it sits. And the developer got him involved with the development. He got caught dumping on some of his property and they shut his whole project down. Now, the guy that owned the piece of property that I bought was kind of stuck in limbo as he was involved with that guy. That guy has since died. The property that was actually dumped in has now been built upon. There's two houses in it. It's a five acre piece of property and not spoonful of drugs taken out. Aside from that, it's developed, it's all in the past, and now this piece of property still sits there, but in mine. My property is thirty-five Cedar Street, my neighbor is thirty-three Cedar Street, this would have been thirty-four Cedar Street. I'd just like to acquire it. I'm not gonna look to build on it tomorrow. I just, I have five kids and two of them are in college, two of them in high school, and one in grammar school. And I had no kids when I moved in. I'd just like to square it away for a while.
Mr. Prisco.
Up till now, at least a short time I've been on the board, anytime we've sold old town-owned land, we have put in the stipulation that it cannot be developed.
Right, right. It wasn't that this happened and all of a sudden they, I didn't know it all happened before I even knew I could buy property on Cedar Street. Yeah, I was wondering if, now that that's all in the past, the contaminated land has been built upon, it's all done, people live in there, and this piece of land still sits there. So I just wondered if I could acquire it, if there's anything that could be done to lift the restriction. It's been parked, it's all set, I get, I get everything I need, I think. I live in the ownership of that ten thousand square foot piece of property.
Mr. Foley.
Mr. Galburro, correct me if I'm wrong, if there is no, if there's no restriction on it, we have to put it out for bid, then? It can't just be sold to the, no?
Depending upon the value of the real estate, it may be that it's eligible for an abutter program.
Okay.
But based on the amount of land that's being discussed, I think that there's a good likelihood that it would need to be done competitively.
I was before the board a year or two ago and to acquire the property too. And I think we were willing to let it go for the cost of the paperwork, nine hundred dollars. That was then, and then I lost track of it. It's my fault. I did, I never followed up on it.
Right. If I correct, that would be with the restrictions, though.
Right, right. You would not be able to develop on it.
If I was to acquire for the nine hundred, yeah, whatever the land's worth, ten thousand square feet.
Right.
I'd be willing to do whatever, you know, I need to do to acquire.
Mr. O'Leary.
Generally, what the practice is, is anyone who's interested in purchasing town-owned land just writes a letter to the town administrator, to the board, and seeks to do it. It then circulates to the town department, see if there's a use for it, and then it goes through a public notification and bidding process. If there is going to be some restrictions on it, we may advertise it as such, you know, but until the board makes a final determination, the night that we decide to do it, depending on who's bidding on it, you know, we have sold property in the past with limited restrictions. We have, again, it sounds as though, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you would be combining this with yours and then subdividing your lot.
Yes.
Because it's not a freestanding buildable lot right now.
No, actually, the piece of property wouldn't have any part of the building on it. I just needed to have it legal as far as the square foot.
Right.
I know it doesn't meet the minimum, but
No, I mean, it's current property, it's minimums.
But the ten thousand feet added to it would allow you to subdivide your property once this is added to it.
You are right.
Yes.
Right. So what you're gonna do is you're gonna combine the two, then move the property lines and subdivide.
Yes.
You know, which again, renders it valuable to you, but, or maybe to your neighbor too, but I'm not, probably not.
My neighbor was all for me just doing this.
No, but I'm just saying, so there's really only two, two people who would really be impacted by this and have real interest in it, for whatever reason, whether it be, leave it alone, whether they wanna build a garage on it or a shed, or whatever it is. But traditionally, what we've done is we've required, at times, required the parcel to be conjoined with the adjacent parcel, you know, and then not allow it to be subdivided many times. If the request is to allow it to be subdivided, you know, and then a buildable lot in our threading is worth a substantial amount of money. You know, if that's the case, you know, there's some substantial value, not only to you, but to the community. So that's what would be weighed at the time when we decide to sell it to whomever bids on it. So if both parties who are adjacent to it bid on it.
Yeah.
If the board deems that it's in the town's best interest to give it to one as opposed to the other, even if it's for a lesser price, in order to not build anymore, have any more building there because the neighbor doesn't want it, or if the neighbor doesn't necessarily care a way in, you know, then the price to sell it goes up. And again, you can, you put your bids in and the board does not, is not required to sell it if they don't deem it's in the public's best interest.
I am a little confused. Did I hear that we put this out to bid and that whole block of land back a couple of years ago?
Yes, yeah.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
And we went out to bid and there are a number of bidders for several of the properties.
But not this one.
But this one didn't get sold.
Right.
So what was the rationale back then? I don't recall it.
The rationale was just to put it out there and see who would be interested. And the whole rationale was to get town-owned land back on the books.
It was not to contribute to being a buildable lot.
That was one stipulation.
Whenever it was combined, that was the stipulation.
Not necessarily, right.
And you were aware that it was put out to bid at one time?
Yes, and I dropped out. I should have been there and I wasn't. I don't know if you showed up for a bid on that piece of property, man. I wasn't there.
And your intent back then was different than now?
No, it was the same. It was the same.
Mr. Yul.
Yeah, so to make sure that I'm understanding everything clearly here as well. Back then, none of the property that we put out, and I believe I was on the board then, but none of the property that we put out was to be buildable. We were just trying to get rid of small swaths of land to try and get it back onto the tax roll. That's what I recall. All right, now, this is a relatively significant size and it would appear to me that this would kind of, if he wants to do, if Mr. Brogan wants to do what he wants to do, would have to be kind of taken out of that context and looked at completely differently in order for us to go forward. It would still probably have to go through the process.
Right.
All right, but it gets taken out, because if he wants to build, then that's a condition that he has and we have to consider that.
Mr. O'Leary.
Even at that particular point in time, was Brogan, did you grow up on Cedar Street?
Yes, no, I was on Eam Street.
Eam Street, right, right. Anyway, had he put in a bid, you know, for twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, with a restriction, you know, that it be joined with his so that he could subdivide to build, then the board would have to make a decision. Even at that time, you know, the intent was, you know, get some of these small parcels back onto the tax rolls, not necessarily to allow another buildable lot. But if that were what you were intending to do, then the board at that time would have considered a different set of restrictions, you know.
For that property.
For that particular parcel. So again, if we decided to put this out, petition us to put it out, you know, when you bid, you know, you should conclude the fact that you were bidding on it with the intent of purchasing it with no restrictions to allow you to, at a future date, potentially subdivide and have another buildable lot, because this would allow that to happen. And in disclosing that, and I would think that your bid would then be reflective
Right.
of that value. Because if your bid is low, we don't necessarily have to take it, you know. And if, again, depending upon the discussion that takes place, if the neighbors are not necessarily opposed to that occurring at a future date, it wouldn't be, it would be in your best interest to have the neighbors weigh in
Yes.
at that time.
Mr. Foley.
So I happen to, Mr. Brogan's request went by there months and months ago and it really only, again, it really only affects him and his neighbor. And that was one of the first questions I asked. And he had said that his neighbor would absolutely come forward and verify that he didn't have a problem.
Back when I was gonna, back at the meeting when I was gonna get it for nine hundred, my neighbor was with me at that point, too, and said it was all for it.
I can assure you that if it was nine hundred or eleven hundred dollars, it would have had restrictions. It would have had restrictions on it.
This way, this is a
Mr.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Mr. Brogan, I'm just looking at the town's GIS system online. And it looks like there's two parcels that abut your property, one directly in front of your property to the north and then one directly to the west. The one to the west looks like it's about ten thousand square feet.
That's the one.
The one to the north, which appears to be at the end of Cedar Street, but through which a driveway may
Is it, does it look like a hammerhead?
Yep.
Yep, that's a hammerhead. That's for a drain that the town had put in. It's like a, it's just a storm drain sooner. It goes out to a bunch of locks somewhere in the woods.
Okay, but it's not that parcel you're looking to buy?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a pie shape.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yul.
Would we be allowed to put, so he doesn't go through an exercise of prudality here, that would it, are we, can we put a minimum bid on the property?
We can put, absolutely.
That we know that we would accept at least?
Absolutely.
This way, if you come in with a number and you make up a number, then
I understand, yeah, it's gotta be fair.
I don't want you to come with a long number inadvertently and so.
So what's changed from when we actually put this land out?
Nothing's changed other than the interest, us being now aware of the proposed use for it, which would, again, depending upon the board, what action the board takes, what restrictions are put on it or not put on it, would impact the value to Mr. Brogan.
Right.
And
Now, I'm looking at, there's a, you live off of a cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Right. And then there's a long driveway, I think, that goes to a house?
That's my house, yes.
That's your house?
Yes.
So where is the?
Oh, you're, you're not in GIS.
I'm not in GIS.
It's right here.
Ah, okay. So the frontage would actually be off of this driveway?
Correct, there's no frontage.
That's not a street, right?
It's actually, it's actually town-owned land. The section is town-owned land, right here, it's front of his driveway. That would have to be the frontage of the house, because this is not, there's no frontage here. They can access it.
Yeah, it's a big area right there.
Right.
Grass, my driveway goes through it. It's my property, but that could be made frontage for both pieces.
Now, that parcel that your driveway crosses is, is that an easement, or is, it appears as though it's town-owned land and it must be an easement granted to the developer at the time, maybe such a
I guess. I don't really know. I'm sure.
So have you already had it surveyed and looked at as far as your ability to have sufficient frontage?
Yeah, I've had it looked at, but, and I've had it parked and all that. I just, I know, I didn't have this piece of property surveyed into it. I was looking at other avenues of like approaching my neighbor that would decide out the back, if I could buy his property, because he has more property.
These are the power lines here.
But, fire from the town. I think this is the way it was meant to be to begin with, so it's not gonna be easy to come to the town and see if you wanted to sell it.
The backside of that is where the power lines are.
Right, the power lines are
Potentially where the gas mains come in.
Which may impact the value of the property. Mr. Chairman, all I would suggest is that Mr. Brogan, you know, put the letter together, petition the board to consider selling the town-owned land and put it in touch with, without restriction. And then the board will deliberate, internally discuss, and probably have the building inspector take a look at it and see what can and can't be done. And then, and then we can put a minimum price on it. And then if he still has an interest, we advertise it. Or you can put it two prices on it, you know, one with and one without restrictions, so that another neighbor may be interested with it without restrictions in order to prevent something from being built. Some people do that as a preemptive, strike in order to protect. Hey, Bro.
Mr. Prisco.
Is there commercial business on that same street, there any?
There isn't any. I've got a neighbor who's in business, but it's not commercially zoned.
So I've received a lot of complaints from several of the neighbors down there, but I'm working with Mr. Galburro to understand this, so I'm not familiar with the area.
Does it have a big swimming pool around the corner, or is
It's in above ground.
That big? I don't know, maybe I'm looking, maybe
No, it's a tar. It's a blue tar.
It's a tar? This here?
Well, that's not commercial.
No, I, this is you, right?
No, that's, that's the area that, oh, that, I know, that's a tennis court. What year is this one?
It's just a Google map, basically. That's you? Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's right here.
Oh, it's Sicily, okay, fine. This, this isn't a street, is it?
No, that's a driveway.
That's a driveway, yeah.
The cul-de-sac is right there. No, that's my driveway.
So you don't know what that is?
That's a tennis court.
With a top on it, I guess.
Well, it's more like the hockey than tennis.
Freeze it in the winter, maybe.
Oh, okay. Got it, okay. That's where I thought it was, but then I
What the board wants to do on
What the board wants to do on it.
I think that's a good suggestion, Steve.
What was the suggestion?
Well, generally, the process is not usually this process when people come in and kind of talk about it as one parcel at a time. Some, you write the letter to the board through the town administrator requesting a certain parcel to be made available for sale, state your intentions, and I would strongly suggest that you infer that you do not wish to have any restrictions on it for potential joining with your property and potential future subdivision, you know, for building purposes. And then the board can, again, have internally take a look at what can and can't be done, and then the board will ultimately decide to put it out to bid, and we can set a minimum price, and we can advertise that there may, that may be restrictions, it may not, you know. So I would just, falls in your court, I think, as far as, as far as what our practice has been, what our policy is.
I have a word going now.
You know, so send a letter to the town administrator requesting that it be put up for auction, and state what your intentions are, and with or without restrictions, and then we'll react.
Would it, would it make sense for, Mr. Brogan also include a letter from his neighbor stating that?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Not yet.
I hope they have a public hearing.
But I, but I think it, I think when he initially petitions us, he should state what his intended purpose is. And so other people do say, but I just want to, you know, join it with my parcel for potential, you know, septic system expansion, or put a garage or shed on it, or whatever it's going to be. Because at times, you know, we will put restrictions, where you can put an accessory building, but you can't build another home, you know.
As you're coming out of your driveway?
Yes.
Which side is this lot? Because I don't have the...
It's right here.
So this is his home?
No, he said this was his home.
Hold on, hold on, that's his home, it's this lot right here.
It's that lot, okay, all right, okay. I got it, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
I'm all set.
And if you need, so you're gonna draft a letter with your intentions to the town administrator?
Have you touched with Michael Jay?
And we have the beats and bounds of that lot, and I recite some.
Oh, yeah, we had a whole package together on that property.
Right, that's right, we did.
We just need to resurrect that.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Well, if we're gonna do it for this one, are we gonna, we haven't done this in a while, seems like a couple of years.
Well, we haven't gone through a complete review again.
Right, and is that something we're just gonna do them?
Yeah, but I think right now we're in, into budgets.
Okay, I don't know if we want to do it all at the same time, or our intention is just to take on this one?
Well, I mean, we take, this is a request. If there are any other requests, I think we can take them in, but I think we should do a review of the town on land again and see if there are other parcels that we want to put out to bid like we did a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay.
Seven thirty-three.
Doing quite well this evening in terms of the clock. The finance committee is, a couple of members are here, we have a budget hearing starting with the treasurer-collector, who's present. Another member of the finance committee has arrived. You want to step aside, Mr. Gilberto?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the agenda tonight, we have budget presentations for the treasurer-collector, the town clerk. We were scheduled to have information technology, but we'll need to reschedule that to a future evening. Finance and accounting, veterans, assessors, and a library. And I would turn it over to the town treasurer-collector.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mary Ann McKay, treasurer-collector. I really have a few increases in my budget this year. I have increases in postage, and an increase in professional services and due to the membership. The accomplishments that, for FY15, we implemented a new computer software system for our collection system. We have, now everything is all integrated, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and our utility bill. We've been very aggressive in my collections for real estate and personal property, motor The reason that my budget did go up is last year, yeah, last year, the postage rate went up from 46 to 48 cents, so that's where some of the increases that I'm asking for, like, for professional services, is for our tax title attorneys, for our tax title, going in and researching all of the properties that we pay for tax title, to make sure they have, where titles and everything. And then due to the membership, my bond, my personal bond went up because of the amount of money that we have because of the school project.
Any questions for the board?
Mike? Just a request for next year, maybe Liz, if we could have some consistency between, I know you have a roll-up that captures collections and treasuries into your, and under finance, but it would be helpful if, under these little ones like this, that we stayed consistent and we had that personnel, it's not a spreadsheet, but it's, it's all the numbers broken out by the people, you know which one I'm referring to, what it looks like, the style of it. I could show you, but it would be easier to understand the personnel numbers, because there's only two sheets here, and it's kind of hard to understand who it is.
We did put under finance all the finance staff?
Right.
Which includes treasury collection, assessing, finance, accounting, and IT.
Yep.
How would you like to see it, Brogan, by...
Well, like, right now we're reviewing this section?
Yes.
So now I'd have to get out and go back to the finance to see it, to ask questions at this time, so rather go back and forth if there was a way to consistently...
We changed the format to this new format this year versus how you used to see it, where you would see the treasury collector staff under Mary Ann's budget, we may finance one whole division this year.
Yeah, no, I saw that.
We can break it back down if you'd like.
Well, no, I guess, but if we could just take a minute so I could go back there, because I think I had a couple of notes, and I just don't want to delay it in the future.
All right, while you're waiting for notes, any, Penn Cal, have any questions?
Board members? Yeah, I'm just trying to get this, sorry.
Yeah, I have a question. Is $2,500 in professional services computer in the treasurer-collector's budget?
That's just for our tax title attorney. It should be commodified, regular professional services, it's always been broken out, but when he goes to the registry, there's, if there's extra, then he, we just keep it as an extra line item for him, but when he goes into the registry, when he does his filing for the registry, he sends us a bill for it and tries to keep it separate, so like, when he has to buy files and stuff like that, we just have to keep that separate. Right. It's always, I respect that, I'm not sure.
Well, we can change that. I was thinking about that earlier, and, you know, like many other departments, there's classifications of accounts that always been that way, so we will move that $2,500 into just professional services legal for FY17's budget, or we can do it for '16 if everybody's okay with that.
Go ahead.
Any other questions regarding that? So that was broken into essentially two legal columns, right, so one is tax title, is there a separate, or is it town council?
No, it's still our tax title attorney, but it was broken, it was broken out.
It was, it's the same thing, only broken into two pieces?
Correct.
One, one piece was for the reporting fees at the registry of DMS.
Ah, okay, I got it, all right. Any other questions regarding this, Michael, do you find?
Yeah, I did. So, all your information, at least personnel-wise, is all under collector?
Yes, well, treasurer would only be my assistant, her, her salary is under there and my stipend is under treasury, everything else is under collection.
Right, so, and that's where I was, I didn't see that in your roll-up. You see what I'm saying?
Her salary's broken.
It is total.
Two separate budgets, but it's totaled in yours?
On the spreadsheet that Michael is looking at, these are, you do see Mary Ann McKay, collector?
Yep.
And then her certification stipend, and the grand total of her salary, so it locks it together.
Locks it together, okay.
Yes.
That's why I wasn't sure if that was the case, because before it was a little, we had separated, now we're rolling it up.
Right, same, same when you get to the finance division.
Yep, that's fine, now I get it, thank you.
Okay, Don, yes?
Yeah, on the collection budget, the 53020 legal services, the budget $27,000, and I've only spent about $2,200 so far, is that back end loading or something happening in the second half of the year, we use number?
Yes, right now we're in the process of advertising for tax title, so the majority of our spending for tax title eventually happens anywhere between now and April is when we actually go out to tax figure, so that's when the majority of the money will be used.
Anyone else?
Nope, just want to, again, continue to applaud your efforts.
Thank you.
You know, as far as collections and do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that how you do it?
Today. It's real online, I do it.
Just making sure everybody knows.
Oh, yeah? You need to run off the door real quick, don't you, sir?
I'm fine.
Any more questions for Mary Ann? Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we taking these in order, Michael?
I would advise so, yes.
Okay, town clerk?
Good evening, everyone.
I know it's, it's on down.
It's easier than... In this case... Mr. Gilberto, you have any, Alvin State, have you got any, sir?
I defer the presentation of the town clerk. Her requests were what was recommended for this particular budget, as was the case for the treasurer-collector as well.
I'm waiting for Mr. Missouri to get to the page, it looks like he's still scrolling.
Yeah, I'm using it in PDF expert, so I can make notes, and you have to go back to the index, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I'm all set.
All right, well, as you know, the town clerk's budget is in two parts, records and elections. The good news is this year, or fiscal year 2016, it does go down, there's one less election in the budget for next year, and that really is the driving force of the costs in our budget. So we only have a presidential primary in March of 2016 and a town election, so that's one less election, and that drives the cost down for the elections budget, which reflects the majority of the decrease. It affects personnel, professional services, personnel, of course, is the election workers, professional services, which is programming of the voting equipment for the elections, and police and constable fees for details, you know, small amount in supplies. The increase, the one increase under the elections budget has to do with census printing costs, we did go to a new census printer this year, and those costs were elevated a little bit, printing tends to go up every year, no matter what we're printing for forms. So that does reflect the majority of the decreases in the elections budget, and that one line item has a slight increase. This year, opposed to that, we did have three elections. We have the state primary in November of last year, excuse me, the state primary in September of last year, the November state election, and then the upcoming town election. So we still have one election to go in this fiscal year. Anyone have any questions on the election?
Questions, the boards?
So the revenues that you acquire from the dog licenses and stuff like that, is that, where would we capture that?
It goes in the general fund.
So, but we're captioning that just in the, under our...
License permits.
License permits? Thank you.
Which shows up as in the revenue plan connection, this local receipt?
Yep.
Finance committee?
Under the records portion, that remains pretty static usually. There are some, some increases, and that's the personnel costs, which is contractual. Under repairs and maintenance, we're going to acquire the treasurer's office electronic cash register, because she has moved to the Munis software for their counter work, and the cash register that I have is not electronic, it's old, it's probably about 16, 17 years old already, so there's no service contract available on it, and when I've had to have repairs, I have to pay for them outright.
So you, you actually collect the fees?
Yeah, yeah, every department collects their, their own fees, and then we all turn them into the treasurer's office. So we're going to, I have her cash register actually now, and I will take over the service contract, so we'll have a more updated machine in our office for, for that purpose, till we get to the point where we're all turning in money under Munis, I guess. Advertising costs go down?
Let me pull you on, Barbara.
I'm sorry, Mr. Missouri.
Is this something that, if we go over the collections, right, they have it somewhat automated now, correct, and it's going directly into Munis?
Yes.
So town clerk, doesn't go directly to Munis? Or is that what Barbara's talking about doing?
I think that's what's coming down the road for all departments, probably.
There's a possibility of using it in other departments. It depends on what module we choose for permitting and licensing, which is something that we are working on with the building department?
Ah, okay.
Which would tie in all other departments, the police department, the buyer department, town clerk, so if, you know, whichever direction we go in, we could then have it entered directly to Munis, just like the collection offices.
Okay, so, so we don't quite treat it like someone from the outside coming in and pay a, you know, an excess tax bill or something like that? They would go directly to the town clerk and pay the fee, and then what happens after that?
Sure, so that, you know, ties up her, her day, the end of the day, and then, you know, brings over deposits to us on what we call a treasurer's receipt, where she lists, you know, $200 in dog licenses or $200 in marriage certificate, you know, all...
File records, publications, anything that we sell.
Right.
Yeah, it's all, it's all broken down.
She breaks it down by category, and then we post that to Munis ourselves.
It's manual, it's just a manual process.
Hey, Penn Cal, you're all set, right?
Mr. Chairman? Something that I probably should note, especially as we're going through the departments that are a bit smaller than those that we reviewed in the public session on Saturday the 28th, again, as I noted in my budget memorandum, due to the timing of the town meeting's approval of the annual budget in June of 2014, and the timing of distribution of merit, wage and salary adjustments, as well as the cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 2015, you'll see that, in most cases, you'll see a comparative increase of about five or six percent for departments, particularly for non-union department heads. That's not proposed to be a recommendation to change from 15 to 16 in this budget, but it's a reflection of the change for what wasn't in place in June 2014, and it is now catching up through this process.
Because the money came out of the salary pool instead of the budget of last year, correct?
That's correct, and I just looked to the finance director to make sure that I'm getting this correct, but it's not only merit increases, but the cost of living for non-union employees as well.
Correct, so the FY15 budget amounts that are listed do not include cost of living adjustments or merit increases, and those were both determined after June town meeting of last year. So those figures were, were budgeted, but they were budgeted in the salary pool. So going forward for the FY15... the salary pool, so going forward for the FY sixteen budget, that is why there is an increase from fifteen to sixteen, it's driven through the cost of living and merit increases that were given after June town meeting.
And in fact, it doesn't reflect proposed salary increases for the next fiscal year.
Correct.
I was gonna bring this up, Liz, when you came up in your presentation, 'cause when I went through all these budgets, I didn't notice significant salary increases, six, five, um, and then it did dawn on me how this happened, which I think we need to nail down a process for merit raises, or at least create a separate budget that we, I think we should approve as a board, for the town administrator, at least a lump sum number of some sort that we're.
Basically, in, in the salary pool, there wasn't, or there was budgeted for merit increases. And I assume that there would be one.
Cost of living.
No. There's, there's a line item for merit increases, correct?
Yes, so if I may, the salary pool consists of line items for contractual negotiations, whether it's, uh, cost of living increases, um, you know, merit increases, we also budget the salary pool for sick indication buybacks, which are contractual, and we base those upon averages over, you know, um, a period of time, same thing with the merit increases, we base that upon an average, um, uh, of three percent, thinking that, you know, not everybody's getting it four, but not everybody will get one, so, you know, we, we even that out, um, the salary pool also calls for, uh, year-end small adjustments, um, we usually budget that around two percent, so if there's, you know, something that takes place where we have to fill a department for, you know, um, someone being out sick, or something like that, that we haven't thought about.
Yeah, but that's my point, is that, you know, up till now, at least over the last five years, I've heard the discussion about merit raises, but we've never, as a board, discussed merit raises, or even, I thought, settled even on a number, it's the first time I even heard a three percent, I just think we should have more transparency and capture, if we're gonna budget for merit raises, we should all know what the budget is for merit raises. And we don't really have, because if you look at these budgets.
I think, uh, I think you're right in terms of that, but I think in the, in terms of the process, the, the amount of money that's budgeted is put in there for potential merit raises, the decision of who gets what isn't made at, at budget time, it comes from the town administrator.
Bob, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, we need to be more transparent about it, and we need to have.
It's been in there.
Well, I mean, if you, you see this, you see here in these budgets?
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm very surprised, not that they don't deserve it, but it does seem like the process is broken, and, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna get into it now, but I definitely would like to have a sidebar with you on it.
Sure.
Because it, to me, we, we don't have good transparency on merit, uh, merit raises up till now.
I don't disagree with you.
Rightfully so, but the, the raises are right, and they were deserved, no doubt about it.
Mr. Gilberto?
Just a, a note that I would make regarding that, uh, yeah, in the interest of transparency, with regard to the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget, as I noted in the memorandum that accompanied the town administrator's recommendation, at this point in time, there is no allocated funding for townwide, um, merit increases in the town administrator's recommendation. Again, that's not a final budget, um, it has presented to show that, uh, while we're able to do many things in the budget, there are things that remain unfunded, and my hope is that we'll be able to resolve those issues between now and the final budget going into effect, um, so.
Any other questions for Mrs. Stats?
Anything else that I can ask, and specifically on the records budget, about line changes? I just would like to say, going forward for next year, that, uh, there was a bill passed this past year called the Election Reform Bill, and that is gonna bring some changes under the election laws, so that will incur additional costs going forward next year, and, um, just something to be aware of, that in addition to increasing, going back to having one additional election, there will be some costs, you know, borne by this legislation that we will be required to do, such as early voting, and, um, uh, some other, other things that, uh, will incur some costs, some additional costs, so I'm just letting you be aware of that a little bit ahead of time.
Just, excuse me, just in relation to that, is that something that would be, um, considered a state mandate?
Oh, yes.
Unfunded.
So that, so that it should be referred to the state auditor's office division of local mandates?
We are working on that, we did succeed with that with the special elections that were held recently and got funding for that, and our organization, the Town Clerks Association, city and town clerks associations are both working towards that, they are definitely mandates, they're not funded.
Right, so that means they're unfunded.
So, the auditor has, has, you know, acknowledged that in the past, and, um, uh, she did come to one of our conferences and did, did say that, that she felt that they fell along the same lines as previously, um, permitted, you know.
So, all that means is that, you know, we still have to fund it, but we'll get reimbursed
Yeah.
At some point to offset it.
Hopefully, yes, yes, hopefully.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're, we're passing over information technology?
Yes.
And it's gonna be rescheduled for our meeting?
The intention is to reschedule it for the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yeah.
Oh, sure.
Finance and accounting.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible to take assessing, uh, in advance of finance and accounting?
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The assessor's budget, uh, did increase slightly, and we'll go, I'll go through it line item by line item, for the increases. The professional service line item went up two thousand eight hundred and forty. The reason for the increase, typically, we, we put in the budget ten thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, what that ten thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars does is supports our cyclical cycle, which is a state mandated process, we have to inspect a third of the property within every three years, so we have caught up in the past three, four years, where we're right on target with the number of houses. The Department of Revenue did mandate a new directive targeting just condominiums, and the condominium directive is that all townhouses have to be measured, prior, the condos never had to be measured, all of the data, the square footage, all came off of the master deed, and that's what assessors did, we just dissected that and put it into the appraisal system, as of two thousand seventeen, the townhouses will all have to be measured, our garden-style condos, Park Colony, Greenbrier, none of those have to be measured, those will stay with the master deed.
That would make sense.
In looking at going to two thousand seventeen being the year of implementation, I opted to put it into the budget this year, and the reason I did that is two thousand seventeen is a reval year, and a revalue, revaluation is very cumbersome in our office, so I really wanted to do due diligence for the condominium directive this year, so what I did was I broke down the ten thousand eight hundred and thirty thousand, what I need is a hundred and seventy-eight parcels of residential properties, and then I'll do the remaining five thousand, let me just get my numbers here, and I just had all my papers array over there, 'cause I was making notes, um, the, the five thousand four hundred and ninety, which is the remaining from the ten thousand eight hundred and thirty, I'll use towards the three hundred and thirty-eight townhouse condos, so, in doing that, the budget will have to go up on the professional services, two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Are there any questions on the condo?
Mr. President, so the new ones that have been built on Hable Street, those, are those included in this number, or they, or they don't have to be right now?
They're not going to be, because actually, I was just putting them in the computer system before I came down here, what I, where those are new, I'm starting off on what the directive is from Boston out of the gate, instead of putting them in here, I've already measured them, there's one occupant, and it's, uh, unit thirteen, so I've already measured that one, and I have it in the computer, so the rest of them will just follow soon, I will be measuring them myself.
So, how, uh, how do you deal with the common areas?
This is a discussion that I personally think they're omitting the Department of Revenue, because it's not gonna be accounted for, it's not, I have the directive right here, I've been to the Department of Revenue meetings, what happens is, they only want us to measure the units that are part of that townhouse, as far as the, as far as the common area, it's, it's gonna be hanging in the limbo.
What if a condo had a swimming pool, and it's considered a common area?
Well, any amenities, such as a swimming pool, tennis courts, any of that, I will put on a separate card, and that will get billed, but as common area, as far as hallways, walkways?
Basements?
That, no, basements will be part of their property record card as an individual, yes, those will be picked up, because the basements are theirs, when I receive a master deed that breaks down, take Hable Street, that includes their basement, they have three floors of living area, that is assigned to that unit, so the total square footage, I will be putting into the property record card to account for ownership, it breaks down to a percentage of a building of ownership, the common area that I'm concerned with is the hallways, if there's a common hallway between units, it's not gonna be accounted for.
I find that absurd.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
I mean, I, I would, I would allocate it on a percentage basis then, or something.
Well, there is, in the state camera system, all camera systems, really, there is a percentage of ownership that is provided to us from the master deed, and we do use that, as far as the amenities, those I will pick up, I, I pick them up now.
Yeah, but you're telling, you're telling us that you're, you're not going to, uh, count any common areas in a building?
The com, the common areas that will be omitted from this process would be if there's a common hallway. If there's a common hallway that is not part of either unit ownership, that part of the building will not be picked up, correct?
Same thing in foyers, entryways?
If you had a mezzanine, if you, any of that, and for the most part, right now, the way condominiums are valued currently, you build it into the percentage of ownership, if the master deed reads it, it should be, not in all cases does that happen, in all cases, that is not how it's read.
Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Debbie, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, so, you had to base it on the deed, I presume, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and if the deed reads that you have a, a unit of X amount of square footage, who uses a storage facility down in the basement of X amount of footage, okay, those are the two, that's how you accumulate the numbers, correct?
The total area.
The to, total area, all right?
Total area.
Hallways, uh, if they have a meeting room in there, uh, those areas are, are, you're considering common area, because it's not in the lease, they don't own that common area, is what you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay, now, when we, when we get to the pool area, all right, that's an amenity, you're saying that that, an amenity would get added on, correct?
That will get added on as a separate taxable value card to the association.
To the association?
Correct.
But not to the?
Not to the unit owner.
So that becomes, that's when you begin to separate the two.
They will have to figure out how to disperse that percentage amongst them.
So the association pays the, the, the tax on, on the pool, and they put it into their?
They should be paying the tax on the common areas.
I, I agree.
Well, we're not limited, we're not restricted from doing that, are we? Doesn't say we can't do it, doesn't say we can't apply percentages.
Well, the percentages are given to me from the master deed.
No, 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 the state requirement for common areas, it doesn't restrict us from assessing them.
You know, let me, before I answer that, let me read that again, I, I'm.
I'm trying to read it, but this is always my interpretation.
But, you're right, why couldn't it be added to there?
I just don't think.
For the most part, in the townhouses, you don't find common area between the units, you find them in the garden style.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gilberto?
Yeah, from a revenue basis, whether it's paid by the association, or whether it's paid by the specific townhouse owner or condo owner, all right, overall, uh, it sounds like we're still going to get our revenue, no matter what, it's just a question of who we're getting it from and how much, and in reality, if it's, if we're taxing, uh, assessing the, the association, X amount of dollars, that's gonna go to the, to the, uh, owners, the condo owners anyway, because they're gonna pay it in their fees.
Exactly, and it will be up to the trust to disperse.
So how we, how we divvy it up is, doesn't seem to be important.
So how much is falling, how much is, how much is falling between the cracks?
It's a sidebar.
No, but if you just, how much is falling between the cracks, my guess is very little.
It's, it will be minor, because the majority of your common area that we're, that we're talking about is from your garden-style units, those are not having any change in the process or the procedure of valuation, your townhouse styles, for what we have right now in the town in North Reading, will be captured, and it will be captured because the units are side by side, so the square footages will all be accounted for as they are now, if you have a complex that has any kind of pool, tennis courts, or anything like that, those are going to be, and they are now, we have a complex like that, I pick them up on a separate property record card, value them, and send them to the trust.
And as far as a mixed type, mixed type units like, like a Northridge, which has a, a townhouse style and a single floors, they're all captured?
It's all, it's all accounted for.
It's all accounted for, and then those things, those other amenities, like the, uh, the party room that, that they have a meeting room, is assessed to the association, and then they take care of that through their condo fees, to pay those assessments, right?
That's, that is how we will be doing it, yes, and like I said, the garden style won't be changing, there's three hundred and thirty-eight townhouse style condos, excluding our fourteen new ones on Hable.
So, if there's any further questions about how things are being done, that's time for the administrator to give answers to those questions, with respect to the budget, though, are there any questions? Pink Tom? Bingcon?
Um, yeah. I thought we should have answered everything. Line fifty-three zero 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 professional services was $10,530 for Hable. Last year it jumped to $30,330. I understand why it's at three. Why did it go to $10,530 and three?
In 2014, I had actually requested the $10,830 so that I could, I, I know, but I kind of have to go backwards to go forward. The $10,830,000 would, would account for 361 parcels to be remeasured and relisted so that we could get up to par on the Department of Revenue's mandates to us to do a part of the town. So, with the $10,530 roll forward to 10,000, 2015, we added $12,000 in there for an interim adjustment for a contractor that committed due to the interim adjustments. And we also added in $1,200 for units. And we've always had $6,500 in there for personal property and utilities.
So, $6,000 for personal property?
Abby, can you speak up just a little bit, I can't hear you?
What is the use for the $6,000 for personal property?
The $6,500 actually covers a percentage of the new businesses in town that get picked up and put on the database as well as our utility companies that arise in the compound.
So, this is, this is a professional service? This is somebody that goes out and handles everything, figures it out in your office or what?
Right, but it is a professional service as it's a vendor that'd be hired.
It is a vendor service, definitely.
Exactly, so the $6,500 works in the same way as the $10,830 so that we can keep up on the number of businesses. The town clerk sends me a business certificate, we go out, pick it up and put it into the database and send them a bill.
So, this is, this is all part of the one-third per year? Keeping all the assessments up?
Up with the state mandate, yes, yes.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Abby, so does that tie to the increase in collections of received personal property? Is clear fourteen to thirteen? The numbers in thirteen were like seven hundred thousand, numbers in fourteen were over a hundred fifty thousand.
I'm not sure.
No, I'm just wondering, I noticed that before the number.
Does that have to do with Verizon, ATV case?
Oh.
Mr. Priskin.
No, I'm fine, I'm good. I'll ask Mike at the end, I'm going to wait until you're done.
Any other questions? Do you have a question for her or?
Are you all, are you all done with the budget?
Oh, I was gonna go through two more.
Jeff has one question. I just had a quick question, what she was just talking about, the $6,500. And I, I apologize for not grasping it. But where is that $6,500 coming from? I'm not finding it anywhere, that's coming from professional services?
It's part of the professional services.
So, it's, it's in there, but we don't see it?
Well, it is broken down, yeah.
It's in there.
But it's all part of that line item.
Yeah, it's part of that, okay, but it's, it's in there, okay.
Exactly. The training and education, that did increase by 400. My hope is to get my clerk to one more assessor's training course, which would be course one. And I'm always on continuing education, so I increased that moderately. The postage, I did have an opportunity to decrease that by 150 and the reason I could do that is we actually were proactive last year in raising, increasing our postage so that we could get out some condominium questionnaires just to get a head start on this. And those questionnaires did go out and they're coming back. I don't have a percentage for you at this date. They were just due in my office two days ago. But they are coming in, they're coming in mail, hand delivery and email. So, we're having a very good response. And the reason I chose to do the questionnaires were so that we're not going to get in every single one of these condos, it's just not going to happen. So, if there's any data that I am missing, I'm hoping to capture them on the questionnaire. If there's a finished basement that I don't know about or a deck that went to a sun porch, I can capture that data. So, that was my purpose. And dues and membership, the dues and memberships have gone up again. That's our assessing and the computer for the state CSC, CSC appraisal. So, that's the reason for the increase there.
Mr. Priskin.
So, is there any investment we should consider to try to fix this 38D form issue? Is there anything more we should do?
The, if, if there was more of, if there was a way that it was enforced a little bit harder from the Department of Revenue, right now, the only enforcement they have is that they can't take it to appeal. But that's not true, that's written in the Mass General laws, but that is not true. I have seen and know of cases that have gone in front of the appellate tax board even though they didn't return their 38D. So, I, I wish there was, I can tell you, they went out two weeks ago. I can tell you, some of the parties that have been fined are, have, came in. That I got word today.
This is that income and expense form?
Yes.
Somebody doesn't know what the 38D form is?
We, you know, we do everything that we can as far as sending out a second mailing. Maybe we could put it on patch and, you know, maybe advertise it a little bit more where they did just go out, maybe that's an option.
And you have the right, I believe you have the ability to increase the assessment just based on the lack of information?
But I actually don't, I don't. There is a code of ethics as far as valuation that I take.
I'll debate you that one all day long.
And that whole-
We can move on.
Is if I look at a building and it's $2 million, I can't put $2,500 on there because they didn't return enough money.
But we could take the poor person living in a $300,000 home and increase their taxes like we did this year? You know, nobody's getting any sip at the hair and, you know, the numbers are clear. We have a major problem and, and I do hope this board considers to take some serious changes when we do the tax rate again in this next fiscal year. Because this is ridiculous.
I do hear you loud and clear on that. And that's why I implemented that fine and in a lot of communities-
Yeah, and they don't care, clearly.
We're doing $50 and we went right from zero to $250, which is the max that we can find them.
And they all, and the majority of them clearly would pay that rather than follow the process. So, that tells you something. And the residents in this community are getting a shaft on this one.
I, I agree 100%.
Shame on them. That's all I have.
Bingcon? You have anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you Debbie.
Who would you like to come up next?
Look to the finance director, is it?
Skip over the finance.
I can go last, I'm here for it all, so we might as well.
So, veterans.
Veterans, ah, she is here.
Yes, I should have wrote the numbers down. I'm going to do that next time. Yeah, I got it right here. Hi Susan.
Hello. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Susan.
Susan. Yeah.
Yeah.
Veterans. Yes, $255, $256.
The, the attachment I just gave you is actually a copy of, of giving you an idea of where we're at with the veterans' benefits, what we're dispersing out. So, what you're looking at right now is to the end of June, to the end of the fiscal year. So, it does not account for any additional such as dental, eye, meds, hospital, any other thing that may come out of the ordinary. But these are the concrete numbers that we pay out monthly that we've just been approved by the state. So, at this point right now-
What am I supposed to be looking at, this page here?
It's right on, I actually highlighted it for you all.
Okay.
Yeah, and what that, each page is just showing you all the different months of the expenditure, you know, what the expenditures are. But the, the, the actually magic one is where I actually highlighted for you on the front. So, you know, with the budget being at 330, and the, to date, to the end of June, the concrete number is looking right now at 229,543. With a remaining of a-
We're just confused, it's supposed to be fiscally a 14 at the top, but 13?
Fifteen.
Sorry, that's my fifteen, I apologize.
Oh, okay, no, I'm confused on the, on the title.
I apologize, this is-
I didn't think I was looking on the right spot, yeah, okay.
Fifteen and again down below, total for July, that would be July of?
So, as of-
Bottom left-hand corner.
July first, 2014
14.
To June 30th, 2015. That's what this is right now, I apologize, I didn't-
And then we have multiple sheets for the?
This is just showing you all the monthlies, it's what, each sheet is per month, is what it is. It's all months of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So, the, the only really, the really highlighted, the highlight on the top right there is actually what you're looking, you need to look at. And so, the 229 is the actual expenditure through the end of June of 2015.
Got it.
Okay, so, showing a balance of a little over 100. And this is not including, like I said, the meds, any unforeseen things that come through, you know, the hefty medical bills or anything like that. So, on my line item for, for the veteran services for 5700, I put a decrease in for 20, 20,000? And I feel pretty confident that I'll, I'll make it through next year with this, the way it's set up right now. Because I, you know, I worked diligently to try and get people on the, the Mass Health buy-in and all that stuff. I mean, so we, we do try to alleviate all that and I know we're trying to cut, cut corners in some areas. So, I felt pretty confident where, where I have that expenditure still left over to cover any unforeseen medical expenditures to the end of June. I felt pretty comfortable that I'd, I'd be okay with that number for next year as well.
Then I have a question then. This expenditure, on this sheet, did you end up with the yellow? You said that expenditures are 229, 543?
Correct.
On the budget, and it's spent through December, $111,094.
Right.
So, this through? What?
June. That, this is the concrete numbers I have through the end of June. So, what I did is I already, I have these people all listed in because I've already been approved by the state for their OB, their fuel right to the end of June.
Okay.
So-
So, this is based on today, a picture of today projected through the end of the year?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Yes. Okay.
All right, because I'm, I'm struggling to tie this together.
Okay.
So, this is a, this is a thousand-foot level look at the whole year.
This is a proflamer for the year.
Okay.
Yeah, because what happens is that, you know, I mean, as soon as I get the okay from them, I put that automatically, what I know the concrete numbers are-
That clears it up.
To give you a clearer number of what we're looking at.
I think we're all on board at this point.
Okay. So, that's why I felt kind of confident, you know, I felt confident with the, the deduction of the 20 and of course, next year we can always revisit if it turns out that it's not working in the favor. But I felt pretty confident with what I've got because I don't, really don't see, I'm crossing my fingers, I don't see expending out the whole hundred, 100,000 into medicals. You know, and, you know.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
So, this says our, if this were to hold true, right, we're only about $10,000 above what was spent the previous fiscal year.
Correct. But, that's not going to hold true.
So, tell me-
Only, because, because I still have, I have to incorporate, month to month is when I put it into medicals because that's when I get them from the people. So, I don't know from month to month and I just added somebody on the rolls and that's almost $1,200 a month. So, I don't, when I'm adding somebody on, I don't, I don't know and then I just lost a couple of people, like to the nursing home.
Jeff was waiting.
Yeah, maybe I'm still confused. Okay, as I'm looking at this, you had a budget of $330,000, correct?
330, correct.
$30,000.
For the one line.
You will, you anticipate spending 229 plus by June 30th, 30th, 2015. So, you're going to be under your budget by about $100,000.
Correct.
So, where'd that $10,000 come from?
He was talking about from last year.
Okay.
From last year.
I was looking at what was actually spent last year, it was 219,527 and I was looking at her projection and it's about $10,000 more.
Okay.
Now, she's adding to it some things that are not necessarily on this list.
Right, because I can't, obviously, I don't know who's, who has medical bills and what, whatnot coming up.
She's expected to say 229, just $10,000.
Thank you.
Done?
Yeah, I was just here to try to calibrate this. How many clients do you get a month on average? Because you're, you're basing the 229 based upon your current population of clients. What's likely happening to that between March and?
I don't know, it's like predicting somebody going into a nursing home. I've lost, I've lost-
What have you gained in over the last six months for a month of clients?
I've gained over the last month, I'd probably say six, I've gained. But then I lose, like I lost three because I had one at my nursing home and then I just lost, actually just recently just lost the spouse of another. But then, when the spouse passed away, he came on rolls. So, that's, it fluctuates. And with the overall-
Say, say from the first of the year to now, just to get some sense of what, what's happening here? Is it growing, is it steady, is it?
It's very steady and somewhat growing. So, especially where we have a lot of the younger ones that are coming, you know, that are getting up and they don't have the, the financials or they don't have, obviously, jobs and they're trying to function raise families too. So, I actually have two in that situation right now that I just put on. So, like I said, it's a hard, it's just one of those things, it's very hard to predict and hard to forecast because, you know, one day I've got somebody and they're fine in their home and next day they're in the nursing home and I'm working on, you know, the long-term Mass Health. So, I guess I had two situations with that this past couple of weeks.
I, I think we all understand that you're dealing with a lot of unknowns through the course of the year.
Yeah.
We're just trying to get an understanding of what you spent, what we're budgeting, you know.
Right, and, and the thing is, is I felt confident enough with, with this figure to, to know that if somebody does come on the rolls, I'm covered to the end of the year, for one. And I felt confident enough that I was able to, you know, with the, with the medicals and things of that nature because in all honesty, I've got a lot of them, they're well up there and like in their eighties and stuff. So, I'm, you know, you're talking a lot of them in need of nursing homes and-
So, you're not, you're not seeing a lot of Iraq, Afghanistan?
Yeah, that, yeah, we are seeing, there's certainly flowing heavily. And as we were, as we were advised too, I'm going to be seeing a lot with the Vietnam veterans because the Vietnam veterans are getting up there and that's a huge, that's a whole new ballgame that we're, that we're, we're working with.
That's kind of my question on where, where this is going.
Right, well, the Vietnam veterans, I can tell you right now, with the Vietnam veterans, you know, for, for the majority of them that are boots on the ground, right off the bat, I'm filing, I'm going to, I mean, obviously, I'm going to help them out with this on the chapter 115, but I want to- one fifteen, but I'm gonna, simultaneously, I'm filing a VA compensation for them. With, you know, if they have any issues 'cause they're boots on the ground, that's, that's, it's automatic, you know, agent orange exposure, so that, I mean, you're talking at least, you know, probably close to, if not, I, I, from what I've been doing, I'm an easy thirty percent to forty percent right off the bat. So, that, that helps alleviating the money that's been calculated out as an income, so...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, just so that I can understand, on the budget of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, how do we, how do we get to that number and yet be short by a hundred thousand?
In the previous years, you mean?
Well, no, not this year, I mean...
Over budgeted.
Oh, that's not sure, that's over.
We over budgeted, okay. I mean, I know, obviously, we over budgeted, but I mean, why did we...
Increased?
Why did we budget three hundred and thirty thousand dollars and yet be a hundred thousand dollars shy of that?
Well, what was happening is, the increase had gotten so dramatic over the years that I was literally cleaning out finance for, for transfers. And, so it came to where a realization that, you know, I can't keep doing that, you know, I have to have a better budget to work with, to, you know, so those, that was money for, we weren't there for emergencies. Wasn't helping for other departments that need to do that emergency if I'm taking a whole, taking the whole thing away.
Seventy-five percent of this expense comes back to the community the following year, and is put into the revenue plan as an offset. Just be aware of that.
Okay.
Be aware of that, you know?
I'd say I was not...
She's budgeting, she's budding, budgeting more money than she's spending.
Right.
That's your concern. Uh, but she's got an unknown target, so you could...
Right.
You could question about how much of the res, that, that extra money should be budgeted and, uh, associated with past experience, right?
And I'm not, and that's not a challenge of, I'm just trying to understand the logic behind it, that's all.
And just another point, if I may, um, is that Sue only can spend this budget line item on Veterans Benefits.
Yeah, can't go anywhere.
So, it gets turned back to the general fund, whatever funds are left unexpended, and to, um, Mr. Mysterius' point, we do see, there's a year lag, but we do see a seventy-five percent reimbursement of all, um, approved expended costs, so...
I, I guess the other question I have is, what would happen if we, not necessarily wisely, uh, under budgeted this? Would we, which, would we be able to get her the funds?
She could not provide the services that she's required, and the town is required to supply under the current law.
So, we wouldn't be able to take it from another fund and make sure...
Not with a town meeting action.
Okay, that, that, that's...
We would have a special town meeting, maybe that's better for you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, that instance, um, that Sloughman Newell is speaking of, happened in FY thirteen, um, Sue's budget was budgeted at a hundred and twenty-four thousand, this Veterans Benefit line, and, um, she needed ninety thousand dollars from the reserve fund for a transfer. And, the reserve fund has a hundred and ten thousand in it. So, that meant if there were any other town emergencies, Sue basically ate up, you know, the reserve fund.
Right.
So, we don't really want to get into that situation, that's why we started to look at her caseloads at a current year and estimate how many more people will, would be coming on the rolls, so that she would be able to provide for the veterans of the town without us being in a situation of, where are we gonna get the funding from? Um, you know, we would have an opportunity at October Town Meeting to do that, um, other than that, we'd have to call a special town meeting or rely on the reserve fund, and, you know, that one year, really, you know, we didn't want to get into that situation again, so...
Mrs. Hillman.
Well, I, I was actually gonna mention the reserve fund transfers as well. I think that, um, there are a couple of things that have happened over the last five years. One of them is that Sue's tough terrific outreach, so that, um, a lot of the expenditures or services that were offered, uh, under the old, uh, rep, or the, um, were a lot, a lot, a lot, huge number of services and, 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 that wasn't really out, that weren't before. I think it was very hard when Sue started first doing outreach and advertising for veterans like everybody, to know exactly what the administration has created, and what they hadn't come forward to date. And so, I think her budget was, through no fault of her own, underfunded for several years. And I think that, um, uh, after the various transfers that were made from the reserve fund, Sue's done a great job of trying to be realistic and trying to keep, uh, you know, some sort of markers and understand what's going on, I think she's done a great job, so, you know, it would be nice to have a hundred thousand dollars, but guess what, she may be using it yet.
Right.
And it, it's, you know, I, I, personally, I look at it as a question, 'cause like, like, to recap, you know, um, what Liz said, it's, it's going right back to where it came from, because it doesn't get expended on anything other than what it's meant for, Veterans Benefits, that's it. That, that line item is what it is, and that's it. You know, so...
Okay, any other questions? I have, uh, just a, a question for you, like, you know, the issue of transportation has come up on and off. Uh, today I was heading up North Street, and it was a beautiful, brand-new, uh, appeared brand-new to me, uh, Veterans Administration vehicle, obviously picking somebody up.
Mm-hmm.
So, can you tell us a little bit about what's, uh, how that, how those are arranged, and are there any issues associated with that?
That, that, it, it depends on where that vehicle came from, I'm not sure if it was from the Bedford VA. I mean, typically, like I've explained, I, if I need to get somebody to, say Jamaica Plain, what I typically do is I try to get them over to the Bedford VA and get them, the transportation from the Bedford VA on the, you know, in their vehicle to Jamaica Plain.
So, I raised the question because it, I saw this vehicle in town, I was under the impression that we weren't getting that service, so...
And, and it's very few and far between, so it could be somebody from another, that he may have known from another town, or the individual may have known from another ti, or from the Bedford, that may have done that. It, but it's, it's very, very limited, and it has to be one of those things that, if it's available, type of thing.
So, what I'm hearing is that a veteran can make a direct connection outside of coming to North, you know, talking to your office to get transportation?
They do call me, and I've, and I've like alerted, I have a gentleman actually out of Wilmington that's helped me out, but then again, it's, his wife's been ill, and he, they're volun, they're volunteers, is what they are.
Yeah, but this clearly wasn't a volunteer.
I don't know, that, that, you sure that wasn't the regular vehicle that comes around, like to do the VA comp cases? 'Cause we do have vehicles that do that too, and that's all they got there for.
I, I don't know, I just saw a vehicle for the first time.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested to know, 'cause I know they do make, um, was he up by the moose or something like that, by any chance?
No, I, he was, uh, stopped in front of a house.
Mm-hmm.
If you're coming up, uh, coming North Street headed toward twenty-eight, after you pass the Hillview, there's a string of houses, and he was in the driveway of one of those houses.
'Cause I, unless he was picking up something, 'cause I know they do have like a DAV, like, they have a VN, but it's, they actually meet to, to centralize themselves to help people that want to do VA comp cases, and they're not for rights, that's all they are.
I'm curious, because...
But I'll, I'd be curious to find out.
Was it Veterans Administration vehicle?
Yeah, that could be Veterans Affairs.
White van, yeah.
Did it say Veterans Affairs on it?
Yes, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably what it was, was one of those, they, they're actually, um, a mobile unit that comes out to help people that want, that wanna do VA comp cases, and they can't get to, so they kind of central, centralize themselves in different areas, via the, the DAVs in the local areas and stuff. So, that may have been what it was.
So, just somewhat budget related, so you do work with other surrounding towns, right, to try to see where you guys can...
Not with the other, well, I have, well, like I said, I had one gentleman that was doing it regularly, but then he ended up getting sick. And, and again, you're talking about having somebody that you can depend on on a regular basis, and it's really, really tough, 'cause most of, pretty much all of us are doing that.
Other veteran agents for, you know, the surrounding towns, so you, do you have, uh, you guys have reciprocal agreements to try to help each other?
Oh, we, yeah, we do, and, and actually, it was Wilmington that hooked me up with this gentleman too.
And do we have non-North Reading residents using the services here?
I have hooked up some of the Wilmington, I mean, North Reading people, yeah, to get them a ride to their doctors.
No, 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 not rides, just in, for our services. It's all North Reading, it's not, none of it's non-North Reading, right?
Right, what do you mean, for, for, to get veterans to hear, to hear the...
Veteran benefits through, through us. Are there any non-North Reading people getting the services?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Any other, any other questions?
Thank you.
Wanna go on, or are we all...
If, if you don't mind, uh, do you want me to just go through my, my other li, line items real quick?
Yeah.
I, I, as you know, um, the fifteenth anniversary for nine eleven's coming up, so I'm kinda, um, working with, uh, the Parks and Recreation, and I'll be working with the fire department and police departments, so that's kind of a, something I'm hoping to put in, put out at Ipswich River Park again this year, uh, for next year, two thousand sixteen, it's again on a Sunday. So, um, so with that, um, that being one of the line items, five four zero 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 for additional funding, um, for other supplies. Um, right now, what I've been doing is funding out of the, the Veterans Gift Account for the centerpieces that I make, and the things that I do for Veterans Day for the little kids and stuff like that, so I kind of just wanted to transfer it over on this, on this end, to not take away from the gift account.
Okay.
That's what the reason for that was.
That's what the total nine hundred is for?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the training, um, under the Ballarat.
Mr. Chairman?
Two...
Uh, yes. Just a point of clarification.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, you, you were speaking to the twenty sixteen fifteenth anniversary remembrance of nine eleven, that's something you're planning for, but that's not included in this budget request, right?
Well, no, but that's something that I work with, I, I get volunteers to do all this, so it's not something, it's for FY, for two thousand sixteen, so that would be the two thousand seventeen?
Right, so, but then...
So, I guess what we're, we're interested in finding out is, you have a three hundred percent increase, a request for other supplies, and you were saying one thing, now, what are the, what are those supplies for?
Okay, so, that was going, that is to help out with the, 'cause they get costly doing all those centerpieces. So, those were coming out of the Veterans Gift Account. And the, um, and all the things, you know, and then the things that we, that I get for the little kids, the, the little trinkets and stuff for them for Veterans Day, all that, you know, that was all coming out of the gift account. So, I'm trying to not utilize the gift account and put it into where it should be in, in this line. And as far as the nine eleven, I planned that like, like over a year in advance, I mean, this is something you start now.
Okay, but you're not budgeting any, anything in this particular budget for that event?
For that, no.
Okay, now, all right, that's why I was, thank you for pointing, 'cause that's, I thought your nine hundred dollars was for to buy stuff for that event.
No, no, no.
Okay.
No. And, um, and then just the other line was, um, the five three two zero zero, uh, for the training and education, um, under the Ballarat two, we're mandated, uh, for training certification, um, and it is a mandate, otherwise it can decrease the reimbursements to the towns, uh, if we don't, if we're not in compliance with it, so they added on a third training on this, that.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief note on that, Susan and I have had many conversations, and with the advent of the state taking a more active role regulating the Veterans Affairs Program, the Veterans Service Officers Association has stepped up and is to assist cities and towns in complying with the, the requirements for distributing the funds, has put in place a mandated, uh, training program. Um, I, I think it's the result of a long-term effort by the state over the past six or seven years to professionalize the operation, I think Susan's an example of it.
Okay. And then, just for the phone, Mr. Gilberto, it just seemed she's making a request for three hundred and sixteen, you are approving six hundred?
Yes, that's correct, so Susan is in a situation where, uh, the policy, if, if, if enacted, would, um, would increase her allowance for phone from what she's currently getting out. Again, part of the impact is to try to provide a uni, part of the intent of the policy was to try to provide an, a uniform reimbursement schedule. Um, there were many situations where individuals would see a reduction, there was a couple of instances where there would be an increase, Susan being one of them. And again, I, in the modern-day age and the nature of work that she does, I don't think anyone would debate that she needs access to a cell phone, but if we're gonna implement the prop policy, that's what would happen.
Any other questions?
No.
Oh, okay.
Trying to find out the finance, give me one. And then, questions, I was gonna say, anything else?
I think they're ready for dinner.
We all set?
I think I am, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And I hope the, the library people brought in some stuff from their cafe, so we'll see what they bring.
I take it the library's up next, Mr. Gilberto?
Yes.
If you don't mind waiting for about two minutes, we have a...
Mike, I wasn't sure Karen had sent it to you, so... Does everyone have a copy of it as well, of this slide presentation?
They do not.
No.
I did print some copies in.
And we will put it in Dropbox after the presentation.
That would be better, preferable, it'll end up in Dropbox, we prefer.
Okay, so don't even have, you don't need to see these?
Unless someone wants it.
Do you want a copy?
Yeah.
You made a copy for everybody?
I did.
Oh, I'll take one, thank you.
I don't want it to be in name.
It just passed on. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, when Sloughman Prisco returns, if I could just have a brief moment to make a comment. Oh, okay.
Anytime you're ready, Chairman.
Okay, Mike, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to make a brief comment, um, obviously, uh, boards are well aware, Sharon and I are both, are in our first, uh, first years, and we have, uh, I think, uh, a challenge but an opportunity before us with regard to the library's budget. Uh, the board's well aware from the presentation that the trustees made last year, uh, which I was not here for, but have been briefed on regarding the requirements for, uh, the hours that the library would be open, and, um, as Sharon will show you, I, I think that we have a proposal that will, um, allow us to implement this, uh, the, the changes and the, and to meet the requirements that will be required to meet to continue to be, um, provided state aid for public libraries, as well as the access to the regional library system in fiscal year two thousand sixteen, ahead of our obligation on July first of two thousand sixteen, or fiscal year two thousand seventeen.
Correct.
So, Sharon, I'll take you through that, but we've had quite a bit of conversation back and forth amongst she and myself, as well as the finance director, and I know the trustees have been great, although I haven't been in the conversation, I know there's been quite a bit of discussion as well, and, uh, we believe we have a plan in place, uh, and that plan is what I, I recommend, um, but I'll turn, turn it over to the library director for the presentation.
Sure. Liz will speak first, you second.
I just wanna make one note, um, it's not in regards to her budget presentation, it's in regards to, um, the budget document... It's not in regards to her budget presentation, it's in regards to the budget document that you received at the middle of February. On the library's budget, you'll see, like any other department, you have FY14 original and revised budget amounts and actual expended, and then you have the current year's budget, which will include both original and revised budgets. Now, when I say revised budgets, it's line item transfers between, you know, say office supplies to computer supplies. That's just an example. So there is an instance in Sharon's budget that we moved money from books to video recordings. So if you were to compare it to the actual omnibus article in the town meeting warrant, it would be off by $2,500. But the bottom line did not change, it's just we were reclassing expenses according to how she was spending. And this is typical... The only reason that I'm making note of it is because for the current fiscal year, we do not separate original versus revised. Next year, when we do FY17's budget, you'll see FY15, original, revised, and actual expended. This is something that happens all throughout the year, where we revise departments' budgets according to their spending. So, thank you.
Thank you for explaining that.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to present the budget to you tonight. I'd like to quickly just introduce the trustees who took the time to come here, who put so much time into working at the library. We have Marcy Bailey and Cheryl the trustees, Sarah Ralph, Lorraine Sheehan, Mary Ann Lee, and Lewis Sarah Hamilton. I appreciate coming out tonight and the support and everything they do for the library. Hours and hours of time that they spend to be dedicated. So I wanted to talk briefly before I get into the budget. We all know we're going to be asking for additional hours, but first I thought that we would talk a little bit about some of the things that the library does. We know that the library has books, and we know that the library has databases, but here are some things that you may not know that you can get at the library. You have half-price Lowell Spinners tickets, so family can go to see the Lowell Spinners and all thirty-eight home games we have tickets for, and you can get them half-price. We have museum passes, we have internet access, we have lots of different things that are happening at the library that people can come and take advantage of. We have lots and lots of programs for children, young adult programs and adult programs. The newest thing is binge-watching, and if you don't want to pay for Netflix, you can come to the library and pick up all the seasons of Breaking Bad or True Detective or whatever it is that you're watching, and you have access to that. And I don't think people may not be aware of all the other things that the library offers in addition to being a great place to just come and meet and sit in the browsing cafe and have a cup of coffee and have free Wi-Fi, and it's a wonderful gathering place. And we also have books, so those are there as well. But we just want you to be aware, there's a lot of great things at the library. And as far as making the library a destination, one of the things, when I applied for the job and interviewed for the job, I said that I want to make the library more visible to the community and have people know what a special place it is. And by doing that, we wanted to expose ourselves more to the community and find a way to bring people in. And we've done that in a couple of ways already. One of them was, hopefully you've heard about the snowblower raffle, where we had this big snowblower that we brought in, and we only had a limited number of tickets, and we advertised it all around town, and the idea was that you had to go to the library to buy the tickets, and that was the catch. So it got everyone to come into the library. And we sold 175 tickets, we sold out in three weeks. So it was a great way to get people into the library, and once they got there, they could see all the great things that we have. Another thing that we're really proud of is the fifteen and fifteen reading challenge. That's a twist on the North Reading reads, which has been successful for many years. It brings the community together, and everyone would read the same book. Well, this is a spin on that, where we challenge adults, it's an adult program. We challenge adults to read fifteen books in 2015. And along the way, we have raffles, and we have drawings, and we have prizes, and we have events. And our first kickoff event, which had to be rescheduled in January because of the snow, still had eighty people attend. So it showed that people are really looking for something fun to be a part of. And we currently have 120 people participating in it, and it's growing daily. Those are some things that we're really proud of. And we have other programs coming in, I won't go into all of them, but we try to respond to what the community is looking for. People had told us that they are seeing coyotes, and they don't know what, you know, how to handle the coyotes in the town, so we have some of Project Coyote in Massachusetts wanting to do a program living with coyotes. So we try to respond to the needs or the wants of the community, and we try to do the best we can with the budget that we have to bring in some great programs. So just wanted to let you know, there's a lot happening at the library, and there's many more things to come.
Good thing you didn't get a snowblower this year.
I'm sorry?
It's a good thing you didn't need the snowblower.
Whoever won that, I think was pretty happy.
Yeah, they got their money's worth, yeah.
Exactly.
Get it to Ice Dam clearing, huh?
Next year.
And for the spring, just so you know, we're going to be getting a big, beautiful Weber grill, so keep that in mind, that's coming. So the budget request, we are asking for $497,826. And that includes the $19,280 for the proposed six additional hours that we need to meet the open hours requirement for the mandate. And I know we've come to you over the past couple of years telling you that we were going to need this, and it was coming, and it is more than here. We're in the second year of the grace period, and it is really important that we get this done. And what we are doing, we were asked to try to offset some of the cost by using some of our state aid money from our library's state aid fund, and that's not something that has been done in the past. State aid money is usually used for, I suppose, to be used to enhance library services, but we believe so much in doing this, we want to help offset the cost. We really need the additional hours for many reasons. So we are giving, the library's state aid fund is giving $10,000 out of the budget, sorry, towards the budget this year, to help offset the cost, the initial cost of the additional hours. And I'll explain that, I'll clarify in another slide. Yes?
So last year, there was a request for additional nine hours, right? Thirty-five thousand dollars?
Correct.
And we did that, right?
We did, we did, no, we did not do that.
Oh, we didn't do that?
No. Money was given $10,000 to make the head of circulation position full-time, but there were no additional hours added at that time. And we would have ideally... I'd like to have fifty-four hours, because that would have made our hours consistent, and that's what we were hoping for.
So I guess that's my next question, then why the reduction from nine to six, just from a budget perspective?
Yes, because the mandate... I'm going to skip the slides just so I can get to answer your question. So the mandate is that we go from forty-five to fifty hours, and we're trying to be consistent. So fifty-one hours would make us consistently open, make us consistently open like ten o'clock each morning. Ideally, we would have loved to have nine hours to close consistently as well, but we know the budget's tight. I met with Mike, and it was clear that it was going to be difficult to make that happen. So we want to meet the mandate, you know, do what we can with the community, but just be able to have these hours added and be able to go forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yu. Yes. You mentioned to be consistent. Is that the standard? They want you to be open and closed on a consistent level? Is that what you're saying?
It works better for so many reasons. If you're consistently open, we are there in the morning anyway on Mondays and Wednesdays, and I can't tell you how many people come up and are pulling at the door.
Right.
Because people are used to having consistent hours.
I've done that.
Exactly. It's a business, and people go out to do their errands, and they can't get in, and they get frustrated. So it's about being customer-friendly.
But what I'm asking is, for the accreditation, is that a standard or requirement or wish that they have that you open and close at consistent times?
They don't say that you have to do that, but that is ideal. You have to be open at least two nights, and you have to be open on Saturdays. So that's really what they're looking at. It's the number of hours more than anything, but that's what this would do for us by adding Monday and Wednesday mornings to six hours. We would open consistently every day. And we already know that that would benefit the community, because Wednesday mornings, the preschool at the little school is the only day of the week they do not have class. So we would have an instant audience of families looking for something to do that we could have programs for, so that's the reason to do the mandate, and because of population increase now, now's the time that we should... We have to do it. Let me just go back so I can go back to the state aid funds. So there are two reasons that we are hoping that we can approve the budget and meet this mandate this year. Number one is that we are giving some of the state aid money to help offset the costs, like I said, $12,000 this year, and we have agreed to earmark $6,000 for the following year to help the initial offset of it. Normally, state aid funds are not used for something like this. They are used to, like I said, enhance library services, carpeting, computers, program, anything you want to use them for. But we are trying to do it this time so that we can, so we can make this happen. And the idea is that we'll give the money towards the state, towards the budget this year, hopefully be able to meet the mandate, get the open hours, and then the remaining funds that are in the library's state aid fund, we will use for things, projects that have needed to be done, they've been deferred. Helene had a very conservative approach of saving the money, which could have been a rainy day, or whatever she was saving the money for, I mean, that was how she budgeted. When I came in and reviewed the budget, I thought that there were things that we should do at the library and keep less money in the fund, and that's the agreement, that we'll keep one year's worth in the fund and use the money like it should be used to enhance the library and make sure that it's up to date and clean and neat and comfortable and able to do the things we want to do, and the community really deserves and expects. Yes? You said it'd be for state aid, or for... I do not hear any reducing. We actually found that for next year, we're getting $15,000. I don't know what decrease. And I did do an average in the past five years, and in the past five years, our state aid funds averaged about $12,000 per year. And that's what I hope to be in that account as a balance. Yes, Mr. Bodie?
So, maybe I'm not getting something. So the $497,000 includes $19,200 for proposed six additional hours, but $12,000 of that is being covered by the state aid fund?
$12,000.
Of the $19,000?
If you look at it that way, yes, $12,000 is coming. We used it to take off the assessment, the line item in the budget of the assessment. So we just, we put $12,000 toward the budget from state aid.
So if you're saying, so it's $19,280 to keep it open six additional hours?
Correct.
So it's $3,200 an hour, something to that effect?
Well, no, it's more than one person.
No, 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 I understand that. If I'm saying the total cost.
Very well paid for those hours.
So maybe to add on, the top portion is $7,280 of the total requested.
That's the additional budget money coming from the general fund.
It's $7,200.
Twelve thousand are coming from...
And just to add another dimension to that, this is actually the best year to do it, because we replaced two staff that were at the highest step, pay step, with two that are the lowest-paid staff, because they're just starting. And it's almost a wash, the $19,000, not even including the $12,000 from state aid, the $19,000, we saved over $16,000 by hiring people at a lower pay step. So it's almost a wash if we do it this year.
And doing it this year also does it a year before the act, the mandated date?
Correct.
Okay. Which I think is a great idea.
Yes, it's a second of the three years, so it'd help us that way as well. So those are the two reasons why it's so important that we fund it this year, because number one, like I said, it would be a wash, it's the time to do it, and number two, we are giving some state aid funds to try to offset the original, you know, the initial cost of the increased hours.
And again, the balance in the state aid fund is how much?
I'm not exactly sure if I can find that out for you.
But it's like a revolving fund, where it accrues year after year, you don't have to spend it every year, you get to accrue it.
That's correct, but it's, we never know the exact amount, and it's never guaranteed.
Right.
But we have funds that are earmarked, that things we're going to be spending, there's some encumbrances, but I think the balance after that would be about $50,000.
Yeah. No, I concur, you know, Helena was very conservative, and that's a good thing, too.
I respect that.
No, that's a good thing, and obviously it provides an opportunity to phase this in more quickly and have less impact on the budget. And again, as we say, phasing it in, it phases out, and general government will assume the costs in year three.
Correct, we would give $6,000.
But that's fine, it eases us into it, and I think it's a great approach, and I appreciate your efforts and the trustees' efforts to help get this thing come to fruition more quickly.
Thank you.
And recognize the...
The team effort, and Mike and Liz as well, just trying to find the different ways to make this happen.
Yep, it's great.
It's so, so important. If I can reference this slide, is the staffing for the additional hours, and how many staff it would take to do that? And let me explain why it looks like there's so many. That's actually a bare minimum, it truly is. We have a building, the logistics of the building is five floors, so you can't have a program going down in the activity room and have the children's library upstairs. So someone needs to be in that location. We have three floors that we have to have someone, the children's room, the circulation desk, the reference area, and you need at least a fourth person for breaks, or someone calls in, or for meals. And the other thing is, you need someone to be able to do more. What we're trying to do is take this library forward and always have programs going and have events. If we only have enough to staff and people sitting at a desk, there's no chance to ever propel the library forward. So we need the hours to be able to plan and prep and do events and do the great things that will bring people to the library. So this truly may look like a lot, but it really, really is a bare minimum.
Again, just looking forward, where we previously had requested nine hours, are you anticipating coming in looking for the additional three in year two or three or four or whatever?
No.
No, don't ever say no.
Marcy?
I couldn't.
No, I mean...
If it were offered to us, we would not refuse it, but we understand the technical situation of the town, so we wouldn't anticipate coming and asking for it. We do think it would be an asset, again, to have a consistent hours. The library's essentially a retail business. When you go to open the door to retail business, we expect the company to have the same hours every week, so it certainly has that benefit. So if you offer, we don't want to do, but we understand and don't have plans at this time.
I think it's just great if it's ten o'clock every morning, it makes sense, you know.
It really does.
Again, I tuck at the door, too.
Exactly.
And wave to people inside.
Exactly. And we'll have reached the mandate, we won't have to worry about that anymore, and we can focus on doing what we want to do for the library, and that is just more exposure to the community and bringing more people in, because once they come in and they see how really great it is, they all come back. So we're just trying really hard to get the message out there and get them in, so.
Just one more question.
Sure.
So the additional three hours, you don't have a budget number for that in the event that we could fund it, how much that would actually cost us?
I am not sure I could get that to you.
It would just be good to have.
We've gone through these numbers so many...
Probably half of the six, but...
Yeah.
Another $10,000 bucks.
Thirty-three hundred.
It's about thirty-three hundred.
For hours, like Joe said, thirty-two hundred for hours. You could say ninety-six hundred, though, I think we have to look at it a little more particularly because it depends, you know, are you hiring a new technician to fill that? Are you upping someone's hours who's there already? So, yeah, ninety-six.
If you had it, yeah, if you had it, that's fine. Don't go to the... I can just do the mental math, that's fine. I just thought maybe you had that number.
Thank you. Thank you for considering that. And know that this, by adding these two technicians and the current technicians, that doesn't bring anyone up to a point where they're getting benefits, it doesn't change any of that, so the amount of money would just be the amount of money, so. And that is it. We just, we hope that you will consider it for all the things that we are trying to do, because we are making the library a very popular place. We're using social media, we're reaching a whole new demographic, and we have people excited about the programs and becoming involved, and we hope that you will support us, and I would much like to.
Any questions to Sharon?
Only, only how is your thing?
How's my thing?
Are you okay now?
I'm okay now, thank you.
You're looking good, good.
No more casts, no more booms.
All right, great.
I am good, thank you very much.
Any members of the finance committee have additional questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Jerry.
Thank you, Chair.
Bailey, to come up and just give one last pitch for North Reading night off.
Hi, I'm taking off my library trustee hat and putting on my community impact team hat. On Thursday night, we have the first of what I hope is many North Reading night offs. And what it is, is a night when there are no activities, no meetings, hopefully no homework, and I understand that the school department is going at this gung-ho so that we can all go home or go out to dinner, but sit down to a leisurely dinner with our families, have a conversation, not rush off in ten different directions that evening. It's really important, and in fact, I guess I can say a little preview, we had an excellent session last week, I know Mr. Maseri was there and Mr. Gilberto was there last week on the Secret Life of the Massachusetts Teen, and we had over 230 people attend, and preliminary tallies of the survey show that stress and time management was of concern to over seventy percent of the people who answered our evaluation at the end. to over seventy percent of the people who answered our evaluation at the end. So, clearly it's an issue in this very busy, active community. So, I would encourage everyone to take advantage of the night off. We have eight restaurants participating and they're all offering excellent discounts for families to give you a chance to also take the night off from cooking, because I know you all go home.
Do you have the list in your head?
In my head, of restaurants?
Yes.
Let's see, who would challenge me? In no particular order, we have Andrea's, you can tell me when I lose one, Ginger Gourmet, China Cuisine, Porshi Grill, Joe Fish, Mike's, The Great American Tavern, and, oh, what did I miss?
Porshi.
Kitties.
Kitties.
And kitties, that's it. And kitties. So, various discounts from percentages off to free pizzas to free children's meal or free appetizer. So, it makes dinner out a little more affordable and is a really good excuse not to cook. And I, you know, I know in my family, if I'm sitting down at a restaurant, I'm just more relaxed and able to, you know, talk to my children and my husband. It's just a nice, it's a nice treat and some nice family time. And it also helps support the local business community. So, please mention North Reading night off when you go in. Some lunch would like you to mention it, some not so important, but mention it everywhere because it's nice, if it's successful, it's nice for them to know that we're supporting their community, their business, and it would help them probably support the community again as we do this next year and maybe, you know, we're looking at expanding it to an entire month that would be like an unplugged kind of month to put down the electronics and spend more face-to-face time with family and friends. So, that's this Thursday, March 12th. Most activities cease at 5:00 P.M. I know your board signed on, many boards have signed on, some of the religious organizations in town have signed on, so we've had really, really good response. And hopefully it's a nice, a nice quiet night around town for everyone to enjoy. I think we all, we all could use it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Can you tell me how to get the electronics out of my daughter's hand?
You figure it out. I think that's going to be the biggest challenge.
Exactly.
And maybe we'll look at that next year as to how to address that more because that's certainly a big challenge in my household as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ooh, this is a noun for this one, must be a bad one. Mr. Gilberto, do you have anything to kick this off?
Just a note that, again, the finance director has gone through her budget and has identified a potential area where we could take the contracted services funding provided by the board through the budget process last year and leverage it into becoming a position in her department, which is something that I'm recommending, but I'll let her speak more to that.
Okay.
You're up.
First, I just wanted to open with the assessor forgot to speak about her abatement applications and so she left me with a listing and typically she'll speak to how many she's received for each fiscal year. So, the trend continues to decrease. In FY eleven, there was a hundred and fifty-seven abatements received, and that was a revale year. In FY twelve, we received fifty-seven abatements. In FY thirteen, we received sixty-seven abatements. In FY fourteen, which was again a revale year, we received thirty-three abatements. And in FY fifteen, we received only thirty abatements for real estate and personal property.
How many of these, any idea how many abatements were granted versus denied?
I could get that information. I don't have that information, but...
And do we have any in the appellate tax board at this time? That would be another piece of information.
Yes, we do have a few.
Because the numbers, she did give us the numbers.
No, all we had was the numbers that were filed. Abatement requests, but we don't have, how many were granted and how much, how many are pending at the state level?
I will get that information.
Yeah, that's important because looking at the overlay reserves and looking at the budget situation here, we don't want to take it closer.
So, beginning with the finance department's budget, I'll just note, the finance department consists of treasury, well, actually just the collector piece of treasury collection, so just collections, and then we have assessing, we have accounting, and we have information systems. So, those are what comprises the finance department. Under the finance director's budget, there are only two pieces. One is a stipend that I receive and the other is for the assistant finance director. That's all that the finance director budget consists of.
Mr. Prisco.
So, the assistant finance director is listed as part-time position, but what's the part-time, what's the hours for being considered part-time?
It's thirty hours a week.
So, fifteen, sixty is...
It's a point eight-six position.
So, isn't that, isn't that considered full-time?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, she gets benefits.
Full-time is thirty-five hours a week.
Okay.
She's past the minimum.
Yeah, she's eligible for benefits, but...
Right. So, it's not a part-time position?
It's thirty hours a week, it's part-time.
It's not full-time.
It's terminology.
It's not full-time and it's pension, it's benefit-eligible.
Right. So, if, actually, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Yule.
If the hours you provided were twenty-nine, she would then be a part-time?
No.
No.
She's a part-time employee.
Okay, then what's, what's the number that divides?
Benefits is twenty, right? Or is it less?
You have fifteen hundred and sixty hours, so fifteen, sixty divided by...
How many hours for benefits?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, okay.
That's it. You're right. I did the math wrong.
Okay.
Thank you.
Continue, please.
Yeah, because I read you had a part-time employee. I'm going, who the heck's a part-time employee? But then, I get it.
Okay. So, moving on to the accounting department budget, the noted increases would be under the department head's salary. The second noted increase would be under non-union wages, which is the new position that I am requesting for an accounting analyst. And then, lastly, under personal service increase would be union wages, which is contractual step increases as well as an increase in the longevity received and the two percent cost of living that was granted after June town meeting. Then we go down to purchase of services and you'll see a decrease in professional services accounting of thirty-five thousand, and that thirty-five thousand represented funds that were made available in FY fifteen for contractual services to help with special projects and different tasks of the accounting department. And also in that line item, in the sixty-seven thousand five hundred, is for audit services as well as for our annual actuarial study for other post-employment benefits. And then the other noted increase, which is under travel, and that is just to accurately state the budget where there's more conferences being attended.
So, the thirty-five thousand dollar reduction in...
Purchase of services.
Purchase of services is offset by the additional...
By the additional fifty thousand that was requested for non-union wages.
Plus thirty-five thousand, plus fifteen.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I understand that, Steve. What I meant was that whatever we're buying for that thirty thousand is now going to be supplied by the analyst.
Correct.
And I assume the analyst is going to be doing more than just what we were buying for the purchase of services.
Yes, yes. And actually, it's, you know, to speak a little bit about the consultants that we've been using, they've worked on special projects auditing all of our benefits that are received here, getting, you know, making sure that we have individuals that are on the books as receiving, you know, some type of insurance that we supply, that we actually are deducting the amount that we're supposed to be deducting. So, that, that's a large project that has been, been being worked on. We've also had some other services to help us with a treasury management module within Munis. We've had other tasks of looking into invoice audits and tying those to procurement. So, something that we would like the accounting analyst to do would, one of the major job duties would be to be a procurement analyst. They would make sure that everything was in line with contracts and that the proper procedures were followed, whether it was, you know, getting three quotes or going out to bid or whatever, you know, needed to be done for the particular project. They also would be, you know, doing internal audits, making sure that all of our records are in compliance and that departments are in compliance as well, you know, that people aren't just leaving cash in the top drawer of their desk unlocked and things like that. There's a whole slew of things that I have on a job description. The difficulty that we ran into with the consultants is, you know, it still worked for me with the consultants. I have to prepare all the work that they need to do in advance and then they come and, you know, do the work and then they report back to me. So, it just is not cost-effective or time-effective.
Mr. Foley.
So, as you know, I mentioned it last year and the year before, one of our weaknesses, I thought, was procurement process and that we didn't spend enough time on, on making sure that things were purchased properly or, you know, under guidelines. And, and one of the problems is that the town administrator holds that title, which is, to me, is ludicrous because there's just too much other stuff going on here than to waste his time on overseeing procurement. Would this, would the requirement of this position, if we, if we did prove it, would it be that that person be MCPPO certified?
It wouldn't be a requirement that they would be, that, but they would go to the MCPPO classes. At the end of June, I will be MCPPO certified. So, then we would, you know, have this individual go, you know, it would be great if they came with it, but we're not going to have that as a requirement. The salary is...
It's mass certified public purchasing official. You're right, yeah.
The salary range is too low to have that as a requirement, so.
Okay.
Can you come?
You can just volunteer the server.
Continue.
Yeah, I can do it.
Continue.
That's all that I have for the finance accounting budget.
Not much really, James.
Okay.
The major change would be the moving of the consulting fees to actually hiring.
And we're going to talk about IT next week.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, yeah, I know I said it before, but I just think it's, you know, for the difference of fifteen thousand dollars, I know, you know, it's another position and there's benefits and all that added to it too, but, you know, I just think it's very important. I think there's a lot that can be saved by having a person on there who does the appropriate process of purchasing. And I think, I think the, you know, it'll outweigh the, the cost in the, in the end. So, and it just can't be put on the town administrator. He's got just so much other stuff going on that it's important that he not have to waste his time on, on purchasing stuff, so I'm advocating for that, that position.
Mr. Gilberto.
Just to add on the selectman's comments and also the finance director's comments, I mean, we, we check every, every requisition that comes through, but I think that the challenge is the point in time that we're checking it is very late in the process. Having a position that is owning this on a day-to-day basis should allow us an opportunity to have a presence in the departments, particularly the larger departments, with regards to procurement to stay ahead of these issues and ultimately to potentially find cost savings. Again, that would be one component of the position. The expectation that the person would go to the classes, might not necessarily be certified coming in, but our hope is that we'd be able to, in the long term, generate cost savings.
Mr. Larry.
In addition to, in addition to compliance with the state statute.
Mr. O'Leary, you look like you're thinking of...
Yeah, I'm just, I tend to be in favor of this. I don't know, the expectations seem to be pretty high for the price we appear to be willing to pay. As far as the consultants that we use, was this Hinkston or was it somebody else? Who are we contracting out with?
No.
What kind of outfits are?
The consulting would be, one is, for the Munis consultant is someone who actually used to work for Tyler Technologies.
Who did we use up to this point? You know, who did we spend the thirty-five thousand dollars on?
That's what I'm telling you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, one individual is a benefit auditor and the other individual worked for Tyler Technologies and now does Munis consulting. So, they were not, we can't use Dick Hinkston for consulting as well as an independent audit.
No. So, I mean, I know we were expending a lot of resources on the Munis system, so we're going to find less of a need for that now that it's...
Yes, if this was to do some special, specialized work and to train the treasurer on how to use it.
So, we...
My time, I could have trained the treasurer, I just don't have the time to spend.
No, I'm just trying to say, are we truly substituting, we just don't have the need for the consultants from other areas as opposed to substituting the work that they were doing with, with an employee?
This employee would pick up some of the work that the consultants were doing.
Mr. Yule, I think you have a handle.
Yes, yes, it did. Is this a salaried person or contracted person?
No, it's a salaried, a non-union, new position.
Right. And, and you, in your answer to Steve, you said that he'd pick up some of the work of the...
Consultants.
Consultants, thank you.
Right. Some of it would, would no longer be needed. One of the special projects that was being worked on was helping the treasurer collector with a module in Munis that I just did not have time to train her on. And so, that individual brought everything up to date in that module and trained the treasurer collector. So, that wouldn't be something that would need to be done again, not at this time anyways. And then the other projects, doing, you know, audits on benefits, that, that could be something that this position, you know, could do on a, you know, biannual basis, something like that. There's some other smaller projects that they're working on, reconciliations of things. And one of the major things that one of the consultants is doing is pulling invoices, doing invoice testing, where you pull invoices and you then see that there's a corresponding contract or there's a corresponding quote list attached to that invoice to make sure that we are in compliance with the Massachusetts procurement laws. So, that's something that would continue with this position, and this position would be doing that on a daily basis.
That'd be all in that job description that you have to create?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you come, anybody? Anything else, Liz, you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. I think that concludes our budget review for this evening. And clearly, we will have a meeting where we'll go through all of these proposals and have to make some decisions, final decisions on. Mr. Gilberto, are we going to continue on the Kendal Morgan? Thank you, Liz.
Unfortunately, this is just not showing the color for the town on land, that's why you can't see it, it's actually on it.
Unfortunately, this this is just not showing the color for the town-owned land, that's why you can't see it, it's actually on it.
Mr. Chairman, just to continue our conversation regarding the issue of town-owned land, the number of town-owned parcels for which I believe permission's been requested to survey is eleven. Uh, this map, which is, does designate the town-owned land, unfortunately, it's doing so in a color that's not showing up on the PowerPoint presentation here, so if I can refer you to the Dropbox folder on Kinder Morgan, that map is visible. I'm going to do my best to try to highlight them going from that map and with the pointer here, just so that all are aware of the impacted parcels.
Do you know the title of that?
Uh, sure, so if you go through the Tennessee Gas Pipeline folder in Dropbox, there's a folder at the very bottom of the column that's entitled entitled Town Generated Maps and it's map number two. If you bring that up. And for the viewing public, I'll just quickly run through the locations. First, there's a small property in the residential neighborhood on the northwest side of town near um the Wilmington line, right about where that pointer is.
I only see four items in the Tennessee Gas.
They actually have a meeting packet, right?
Yeah, I'm just worried that they were scanned and you won't be able to tell the colors. So in the Tennessee Gas folder, you're only seeing four items?
Yeah, was it?
Attorney flag.
There was something in the meeting packet, though.
Yeah, he's afraid that because they were scanned.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that you won't be able to see the colors.
All the ones that are attached here are in color, I think.
Okay, that's, can you, they may be visible.
Unless this one's not.
I think they're fine, for the sake of discussion.
Oh, that one, you're right, that one is not inside.
But uh, again, there's a parcel up here on the northwest side of town, a small residential parcel, a small parcel in a residential neighborhood, I should say. And then there's a series of parcels that are around the DPW facility right in here that are impacted, and there's also a redding municipal light, but obviously that's not under our control.
Go ahead.
There is a parcel that I believe is conservation land as well, um, and that's right down here that's impacted.
Excuse me?
Yes.
That's right behind some property, that that, that's where they moved it to? Is that where they made the adjustment?
They did, they made a, there there is a, you can see a southerly adjustment in the route right there off of the, that's the right-of-way, they've adjusted the route southerly here and uh...
But the the power line took one to that wetland anyway.
To the northern area, yes, that's the power line route. And um, I think that that's the conclusion. We should end up at a situation with eleven parcels identified as we go through here, although it's kind of hard to tell. But in the in the listing in the folder, you see all the parcels identified.
So with respect to the eleven parcels, right, uh, they're asking permission like they asked our town residents that uh abut or have easements through their property or access to the property to uh survey that property. And it seems to me that uh they don't have permission to do so yet, you know, they don't have...
They do not.
FERC hasn't approved the project, in which case, if it is approved, then we may not have much control over what they do.
Well, the the next...
But in the meantime, until they have that approved, I see no reason to let them on our town property.
They have a remedy, which I'm not aware that they have done in with other cities and towns at this point, but the remedy would be later in the process to go through the State Department of Public Utilities to get an order to allow uh surveying to occur. Um, again, I'm not aware that they've exercised that with other municipal properties at this point in time, but that is something that could could happen down the road.
Meaning they could do that before they get approval from FERC?
Uh, they would not need to have final approval from FERC. I think they would need to be in the next phase of permitting application after the stage that they're in now.
So they make a case that they need that information in order to complete their permitting to FERC?
That's my understanding, yes. And again, that that order would come from the state, believe it or not, to to do so.
Well, I'm personally not interested in accommodating them at this point.
Yeah, they they can follow that process, it's out of our control, but it's in our control.
So with regard to this process, I've drafted a letter reflective of the town, of the board's conversation at the last meeting, as well as what I believe are examples, good examples from other communities. That is in the packet for tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
You'll see as a separate attachment, that's a version approved by town council. I also put council's notes in there in a doc, an MS Word document, I believe.
Right, and I believe you asked some feedback from the board.
I did, um, and seemed that the board seemed to believe that this indicated the position of the town with regard to this matter, subject, of course, to a final vote of the board of selectmen to authorize the chairman to sign it. Uh, one thing I will note is I know that there were some, there was some discussion with regard to um adding potential requests for additional information from Kinder Morgan and those, I have not added those items, but if there's specific things that the board members want to see requested.
Well, originally, part of the additional information we were looking for was the the actual path and the maps.
Right.
And that has been provided at this point. Mr. Prisco.
So Michael, the power line, obviously there are utility easements in place now.
Correct. In addition to parcels owned by National Grid as well, it's a combination.
And those easements with the town and those utility companies, those utility companies can't grant grant permission, right? They'd have to come through us first?
It, I mean, it would need to be something that would be identified within a particular easement, but I'm not aware of any provision that would allow for, say, National Grid to grant permission via its easement to access town property. I think that that's why Kinder Morgan is asking us for permission.
Could I ask a question? I've got a gentleman here, are you?
Hi, I'm aware.
Hi, are you of interest to this?
Yeah, yeah, I was just trying to observe.
Oh, okay, are you are you here to chat or?
No, I was just here to listen and just hear your concern.
Okay, are you here to answer any questions?
No, no questions or anything like that.
Are you one of the abutters? No, he's Kinder Morgan, I believe.
Yeah, I'm a public affairs consultant for Kinder Morgan.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Steve. No, I was just curious as to whether or not, if we had some questions, were you in a position to answer any?
I'm not, but I could certainly get you in contact with someone if that's what you'd like.
Oh, probably would like, yeah.
I'd love to.
Okay. Um, you wanted, you want to, first of all, identify yourself for the record and then if you're going to take some notes, we have some questions, maybe you could get, you could forward to the appropriate people?
Sure. Um, my name's Andrew Flynn.
It's just a, just for Mike, it's for the viewing audience, you know?
I I prefer not to get involved with that.
No, okay, but just as far as identifying yourself and then what role you play, consulting for, consultant for Kinder Morgan?
Yeah.
In what capacity?
Public affairs.
Public affairs, okay. And you work for whom?
By the name of? Brian Hickey and Associates.
Brian Hickey and Associates, yeah. It was Mr. Flynn?
Yeah.
First name again?
Andrew.
Andrew, all right.
I can give you a card after, if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah.
So when you get back to the letter, I guess, um, I'm just curious.
Well, I'll I'll throw a question back. Uh, I went to the uh program that was held in Andover a couple of weeks ago, and I understand that, and we were looking for FERC, we had some questions with FERC, and they weren't there.
Yeah.
And I understand that uh in presentations that were made in other locations, FERC was there. And I think, I don't know if this is actually the truth, but I think I heard that FERC was uh couldn't get out of Washington DC because of some snow.
That is what we were told, yes.
Possibility.
My feeling is that all the people in our region that went to the Andover presentation missed out on the opportunity to talk to FERC. And therefore, I don't think that, uh, since all the other communities had the opportunity to talk to FERC, that uh we were properly served. And I'd like to know when we're going to reschedule another meeting where FERC will be present.
Uh, I'm not sure, can I have any specifics on that? I do believe actually that FERC also missed the bridge in the Antrim.
Well, I I don't care if they missed another one, I I do know they were present on a number of them. And I think it would be appropriate that another meeting be scheduled and FERC be present.
I can certainly pass that along.
Okay, thank you.
Perhaps we could add that as item number one on the the letter?
Yeah, sure. Anybody got anything else?
So just wanted to confirm, the April, we're going to request an April sixth mag meeting with them here. Is that what, well, I just make sure I interpret the letter correctly.
Uh, Mr. Gilbert, I can answer that question better than me.
Well, at the time of the board's discussion on February twenty-third, we were discussing asking that the concerns that would be identified be addressed by Kinder Morgan and the appropriate representative at a future meeting. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you and I spoke with regard to how to handle that request, and I think the determination was to send them the letter, um, expressing the board's desire with regard to the request to access town property and to bring up those concerns and invite them to a future meeting. And I believe we had discussed potentially inviting our legislative delegation, again, providing them some some notice, to attend that same meeting to discuss issues concerning the pipeline project. So I think that that was the intention from the chair and I's discussion regarding this after the last meeting.
Anyone else? Mr. Larry?
Could you find out if if there are any actual contracts? How many contracts have actually been signed by Kinder Morgan for uh New England suppliers, you know, uh, and have there been any contracts signed for overseas suppliers? Uh, could you also find out um if they've entered into any contractual agreement with um the power company in relation to what properties that they have control of and have they been granted the right to go and survey? Uh, again, some of them are just an easement through private private property, but there's some properties that they actually, the power company does own. Has the power company actually allowed them access to do so and has Kinder Morgan entered into any agreement with the power company regarding that access or potential access through their property or through the easements that they have with others? We asked this months ago and we didn't get any response, uh, but maybe if we're further on through the process, that we're more than willing to share a little more information, which would be helpful.
I I do know that there was some publicity, it's like when you may have received it, the whole board may have received it, I'm not exactly sure, but the company put out some information with regard to supply contracts that had been put out, I believe there was some publicity on it last week. Um, I'll make sure that that letter gets circulated to the board members as well. It doesn't answer the specifics of those questions, but it just speaks to general contract information.
Um, and again, I haven't seen anything or read anything yet to truly substantiate the the need for New England. Uh, the Kinder Morgan is professing to be able to deliver or substantiate the need, uh, so if there's more details in relation to the substantiated need and how it can't be met with the current pipelines and, uh, or are they overbuilding this one here in an effort to supply overseas that they're...
I can certainly give my information if you want to give me a call tomorrow, I can shoot an email or something like that. Try to get back to you soon.
Perhaps we could, we'll we'll add these things into the letter and give you a copy of it if you could leave your card.
Anyone else?
Just in relation to um Kinder Morgan's performance record in relation to maintaining pipelines across the country, um, we get the public relations end of things, but when we get the actual, when you Google it, uh, it's it's of great concern, where they've been fined and there's been substantial uh damages and loss of lives and all the rest that goes along with it. Um, what type of assurances can be given to people of our community in our area from Kinder Morgan in relation to their past performance and what we hope, if they are successful, the performance that is expected of them going forward? Now, what have they done to bolster their efforts from a safety standpoint?
I don't know if there's been brought up the, uh, I don't know if there's been brought up in the regional business.
Well, you know, some of the, um, Mr. Chairman, Steve just asked me a question.
Yes.
Um, you know, some of the the issues that were brought up at the um, uh, Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition have been surrounding the need, as you were describing, that there was sufficient need within the transportation of 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 gas within New England already. Uh, they feel that the data that they have received so far shows that the the pipes already in existence can can handle the increased capacity. And so the question becomes, do we need new pipes or can can the pipes that are already in existence satisfy the need? And they're of the opinion that that can be done, all right? That doesn't address the issue of the Kinder Morgan having contracts to to effectively, in their case, hopefully show FERC that they have the contracts, so therefore there's a need. So it becomes a different perspective there. Um, and of course, you know, they express the uh issues of uh property rights as as we have, and that's a big concern of ours, and the and the right-of-way. So it's been, you know, consistent in the questions that that you have, you have been asking. So, um, uh, there is concern about, I don't have the note with me, is it state constitutional ninety's?
Article ninety-seven, yes.
Ninety-seven, article ninety-seven, uh, where the state, they would like to see that the state does not waive article ninety-seven, uh, that would benefit Kinder Morgan, and that's something that's being addressed, uh, going forward with the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline.
Another another question I have for Kinder Morgan and their um experiences, have they have they paid, in relation to the amount of commerce that they have here with these pipelines, obviously it is a significant dollar benefit for them to have this expansion and and be able to sell, you know, their product. Therefore, to my contention, that the easements that they get have a substantial amount of value, you know, to them. Have they ever engaged in any type of activity with communities based upon long-term, say, assessments? It'd be like assessments, like assessing the value of the property and the easements in order for them to to sell their product. Have they ever entered agreements with municipalities on an annual basis in perpetuity to financially pay for the access through the communities, other than a one-time deal with with the property owners?
In an assessed valuation.
In like an assessed valuation. And again, rather than us assessing the property owners who probably would have to give up their rights to their land in order, because my guess is, you know, FERC could order it, uh, you know, Kinder Morgan is going to, uh, over time, realize millions, if not billions of dollars in revenue from the ability to transport. Uh, what's in it for the communities that it's flowing through in order to get there? There should be an increased valuation on that property and those property rights which for, which should flow through to the property owners and therefore the community through an assessed, increased assessed valuation of those rights. and therefore the community through an assessed, increased assessed valuation of those rights and easements. So if they've engaged in any type of, uh, contractual obligation or payment in lieu of taxes or anything of that nature with communities, I'd like to know what the model, what the model is so we're not reinventing the wheel.
Mr. Gilbert?
So I think the selectman is asking with regards to, in addition to the centrally valued pipeline amount that the DOR will assess the value is, what else has been done in advance, in excess of that?
Right, yeah, because they'll get, their flow is for decades.
Right.
You know, they're gonna be making billions, you know, for decades to come, flowing through these communities. And, uh, you know, the one shot in the arm, small pittance, I mean, there was some figure thrown around about sixty-eight million dollars. Well, that's, you know, a mere pittance compared to what they stand to make in the short term, am I in the long term? And, uh, the payment to the communities and the property owners, again, is a pittance. And I think that the fair value of the opportunity to procure these easements and right of ways is worth far more than what's being offered or bandied about as far as figures. And that's, to me, in perpetuity, so long as it's being used.
You know, additionally, uh, to our residents who abut this property, their concerns are related to two things. One is devaluation of their property.
Right.
And two, safety aspects of living next to a high-pressure gas line.
So if they're, I would hope that they'd be willing to share whatever experiences they've had across the country in addressing those types of issues as far as the real true value of what they're getting and how the property owners and the communities that they're going through are sharing in that, in that value. So if you could assist us in getting that information, it'd be.
Actually, I'll give you the card if I have.
Helpful, yeah.
I hope you have more than one.
Card?
Good.
Yeah, and with positive feedback from Kinder Morgan associated with some of our concerns, we might consider it to be a little more forthcoming with their requests.
Right, no, at this particular point in time, you know, again, I've said it publicly before, I found it to be, you know, less than forthcoming with information and rather evasive. And, you know, then they come with a request for, you know, hey, let us walk in your property and survey it. They've been harassing the residents in our community unnecessarily and unfairly. And, uh, so they haven't, they didn't get off on the right foot. You know, and I just assumed, you know, have a say in what's going to happen and, and be part of the process here. But we're certainly not going to sit by idly and be steamrolled by a big multinational company here coming through our community, going through the motions and having these meetings as they're supposed to do. But at the same time, anticipating that they're just going to get the approval from way up above rather than at the local level. So, uh, we'd like to be part of the process, we'd like to have some answers to our questions. And then, uh, maybe our posture would be a little bit different, but to date, hasn't been so good.
Anything else for the letter?
So we need to approve that tonight, or is it a consensus? Do we have to vote on it?
I would encourage the board to take a vote to authorize the chairman to sign the letter. There's no motion as such in the letter, and in the packet I noticed, but that would be the motion I'd recommend.
And who is our secretary this evening? Mr.?
Okay, Mr.?
Mr. O'Leary's taking the evening off.
Yeah, I noticed. Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I motion to approve.
Move, move to authorize the chair.
Okay, I move to authorize Chairman to approve.
Sign.
To sign, I'm sorry, to sign the letter to Kinder Morgan as written?
As amended this evening.
As, well, we, we.
We wrote it and amended it.
As proposed and amended.
As proposed and amended.
I'll second that.
Mr. Fordy's seconded.
Just making it, I'll second.
Mr. Fordy's seconded.
And Mr. Yule, uh, Mr. Fordy's seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Moving right along, town administrator's report.
So if you could leave your card, we appreciate it and, uh, sorry you drew the short straw.
It's a lot here, so please go through your contact.
All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Andrew, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I ask the board, board's indulgence, as I have a bit of a fragmented town administrator's report, as you probably noted from the folder for tonight's meeting packet. So first I'll go with what was in the packet that was published on Thursday evening. Uh, first is that the police department conducted enforcement of the sidewalks, snow and ice removal bylaw on February twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. After reinspection on March fourth and fifth, which was seven days after the initial inspection, as the board had discussed, um, of the thirty-two locations that had been visited, twenty-eight of which were in non-compliance. There remained to be eight that were not in compliance after the seven-day period ended on Wednesday and Thursday when inspected last week. In addition to that, there were an additional fifteen locations that were identified this morning by the police department doing inspections where a sidewalk existed, but it was not visible to the officers prior, so the, the snow has melted. Uh, these locations are now visible as having sidewalk and as not having snow removed. So that would be an additional round of warnings issued with a seven-day notice with regard to, um, the need to comply. Uh, at this stage, no fines have been administered to the business owners, and I'm aware that there is concern in the, in the community regarding, um, what the, the intention is, but the, I believe that the intention was to seek compliance and to provide a reasonable amount of time for compliance to occur. Again, I have had discussion with the public works director, as I stated, and it would be a costly endeavor for us to go through and remove snow using a combination of town-owned and contracted services.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, um, with regard to that, uh, this morning I had to take my car to get repaired once again. And I, well, as I normally do, I walk home or I run home, whatever the case might be. I took pictures and then I also made some notes about businesses that have not, that have and have not cleared their sidewalks. It, it's a very dangerous environment now and has been for a while. And if, if businesses are complaining that, uh, this is a burden for them, my perspective is too bad because they've had years to, to address this issue. But, um, you know, I, I wanna, in some cases, I wanna thank, uh, places that, that did, you know, like, uh, Andreas and Candlewood Lanes, they, they did that, and Mid Park Colony. They all made, you know, an effort to, to clear their sidewalks. For those who have not, such as Dunkin' Donuts, they haven't done it. There's no reason at this point for the sidewalks to not have been cleared. And I, I feel that it's been going on long enough where they should be fined a hundred dollars a day from this point on because it's, it's just not safe. And, you know, I took the video, I had to walk, I had to put my back to the traffic because there was no sidewalk. So I turned around, I just took, took the picture when I could get onto a driveway, and the cars come very close. Fortunately, there wasn't a lot of traffic today, but that's not fair to put people into those circumstances. And I, I think, um, you know, we talk about the situation with, uh, selling liquid to miners. Well, not clearing those sidewalks is just as dangerous as a thing. And, and we know historically, it's only happened once in, in times that I've been here, but someone has been killed, okay? I don't want it to be me, and I don't want it to be someone else. There are people who don't have cars that work in Walmart that have to walk to Walmart, and Walmart doesn't do their sidewalk. So, um, I really think that as far as the enforcement is concerned, we really need to take it to the next level. And if not only to make the point this year so that next year it's, it's better. And then a year after that, it's better. But we, but we do need to do that, so, uh, you know, I, I implore the board, or I implore the, the TA or the police chief to, um, stay on top of these people and make sure that these sidewalks are cleared, because it is really not a safe.
Jeff, I have to ask you a question, uh, and don't misinterpret what I'm, why I'm asking it. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, you had mentioned something about, well, because of the storm, right? And that went out, uh, you know, on the TV and everything else. And I'm just curious as to what you meant by that, because some people have interpreted it as, well, the storm was bad and therefore we don't have to clear the sidewalks.
That was their interpretation, that's.
So, uh, I have to assume what you meant was you wanted to buy more time. Is that correct?
I wanted, I wanted to be reasonable.
This was several weeks ago when you?
No, I think it was, uh, at least three weeks ago. It was two meetings ago, so.
I'm trying to understand when you made that comment, what you meant.
No, I, I meant that the sidewalks should be cleared primarily within a reasonable amount of time. I think that's what the bylaw says, okay? And that reasonable amount of time could be forty-eight hours, you know, two days. You have two days to, to, you know, clear the sidewalks. Well, they, whether to stick to the forty-eight hours at that time, probably could have been more flexible. And that, that's really what I meant. I didn't mean for another month. I didn't mean for right now, for some of the sidewalks that are not cleared, all right, to still remain to be uncleared. Uh, and, and when I saw auto maintenance, for example, they, they were approached by the, uh, by the police department, they're getting out there, and they cleared the sidewalk right away. And their mound was just as high as anyone else's, but they, they got the message and they took care of it.
No, I was just trying to understand what you meant.
No, the, my interpretation of it, again, Jeff being the strongest advocate over the years for the clearing of the sidewalks on twenty-eight. I mean, I took your, your comments as, as taking just a little bit of a step back, giving it a little more time to comply with the, with the,
Yeah.
With the, with the bylaw based upon the, the volume of magnitude of the storm.
Yeah.
It wasn't to give them a total buy.
As stewards of the community, basically, and the fact that Town Meeting passed a, uh, a bylaw expecting that the sidewalks, the business sidewalks, were gonna be cleared, uh, I think that we're obligated to enforce it. Uh, I think it's also, it was also fair for us to cut some slack because of the, I don't know, I guess it might be historic event if we get any more snow, based on the news in Boston and how they're measuring it. But needless to say, it's horrendous amount of snow, and I, I think we've been pretty fair in cutting, uh, a lot of time for them to be cleaned up. It's thawing out now, so it should be a little easier to remove. I know a lot of it got frozen in pretty good after, after a while. So, uh, I think what we need to do is, is to put a hard date and say, we've served notice and effective on, I don't know, the date of the notice or today?
Tomorrow.
Or tomorrow?
Yes, today.
That we will start collecting funds.
I think some of the concerns that I heard from the, the business people were several, several points. One was, you know, they were expending an awful lot of resources, you know, as, as I paid someone to come and shovel my roof off, they're, they're shoveling their roofs off, and some of them are much more, uh, they're much larger and more expensive to, to handle than, than ours. Their business certainly had dropped off in relation to retail sales and people coming in and, uh, spending money. So you see a precipitous drop in, in activity and revenues and a significant increase in costs just to, uh, do snow removal, whether it be just from the parking lots, the roofs of their buildings, which are a little bit more out of the ordinary than usual, you know, and then, and I think it was just a little bit more over the top when we finally came knocking on the door and say, you know, here's your notice, and they went, really? You know, uh, not necessarily recognizing that there's bylaw on the books and, and we as a board have an obligation to try and enforce the bylaws as passed, you know, by Town Meeting. So, uh, and then, but there has been some, some compliance now over the last couple of weeks, you know, since the police department has gone out. I mean, I've seen a lot of activity out there on twenty-eight and areas cleared.
But don't, don't forget that the, uh, Reading, North Reading Chamber of Commerce stood up on behalf of the businesses within the community. And that one of the questions that, uh, suggestions that they made was, give us some time so we can, so they can have, be prepared for next year. And we rescinded the fines for them that year so that they can be prepared for next year. Well, it didn't snow that much, you know, for a while, you know, and, and now they got hit, okay? But I don't think that the Chamber of Commerce really took a proactive role in it. They just came here, made a promise, and didn't live up to it. That's my observation, and it, and it's only an observation based on the results that we see now. Now, I'm sure in Chelsea, the sidewalks are all cleared.
No, they're not.
All right?
But we're in, I mean, not comparing the people, but we, we're out fining every day.
Right.
We're fining people every day.
Right.
Mr. Pruska?
You know, Steve, to just give you a little response to what you just said, your feedback you got from the business community.
You don't need to respond, I'm just telling you what.
Well, I'm just, my opinion on it is, it's a little disingenuous on their part to even say it, because when you own a business and you set up a contract to have your side, have your, um, parking lots plowed, you also would include the sidewalks. So if they had their contracts in place the way they should that included their sidewalks, none of them would be having this problem. And they all were well aware last year. I will admit, I was not in favor of this bylaw. I voted against it. But it's in place, and we have to honor it. Out of respect to the community that voted it in, we have to do it. And to me, it's a cop-out by any business by saying, well, you know, it's more than I expected, I'm behind because I lost business. If they had a contract in place, they have their sidewalks plowed in the beginning, they wouldn't be having this problem, so they just need to get on with it. And so let's, if we're really gonna do this, then let's just do it, because we're wasting a lot of time around this table talking about this subject. Either we're gonna do this or we're not gonna do this. And if we are gonna do it, can we get realistic about it? You know, I, I see, I saw your list that you sent out, and you look at the horseshoe, and it doesn't make sense to force a business that has a sidewalk that comes to an end that forces people out into the middle of Route twenty-eight to continue on that side of Route twenty-eight. I think we, I would rather take a more of a proactive approach to get realistic about the sidewalks on Route twenty-eight. What ones really need to be plowed and which ones don't from a safety perspective, because there's some we don't want. And that, to me, that's a perfect example of one I would not want to see plowed, because I don't want to see anyone walk, stop, and go out on the twenty-eight to continue down where there are no sidewalks. That's more of a safety issue.
And your point there actually is, well, he has his sidewalk. You don't really need to use his sidewalk, you can walk through his driveway, so, you know.
The sidewalk is a sidewalk, and the bylaw is a sidewalk.
No, no, I agree with that. I had the same response in my thoughts. I may have the same response, but, you know.
We can make adjustments and we can be realistic about it, but let's get on with it, because we spend a tremendous amount of time around this table on this subject. And the businesses, when they sign contracts in the beginning of the fall for their winter removal, they need to start including the sidewalks in their expenses. They've known this a long time. Let's get on with it.
So a, a town administrator needs some guidance from the board as to when to start, you know, because we, I think we've been wishy-washy about when to turn the fines on. So, you know.
No.
I think the town administrator has the bylaw, and I don't think he needs direction from the board. I think he should administer the bylaw.
But effective as of when? At the last meeting?
The board requested, um, at the last meeting that, uh, the police department go into inspection, provide seven days for compliance.
Seven days.
And, um, that's seven days that has come and gone. We've done re-inspections. I, I think that that's a, a method that is more than fair for businesses and will continue to follow that. So those that were identified in the enforcement exercise of, uh, a week and a half to two weeks ago would be subject to daily fines at this point in time for not removing. Those that I referenced that were identified. Those that I referenced that were identified this morning will get issued a warning notice, they'll have seven days, like the other batch did, if they don't comply. And they'll also be in the same situation of being issued fines, and we'll proceed that way.
How come those one batch, just today?
Because what took place is, we were running into a situation where we were attempting to cite for properties that actually didn't have a sidewalk in front of them, they just had a grass strip because the sidewalk ended on either side of their property. Or alternatively, in the case of the properties identified today, the snow mound was so large that we couldn't identify there was a sidewalk there until the melting began, and we were able to flag it and identify it.
Well, in reality, we all know the sidewalk goes on the west side of Main Street up to, just past Walmart, up to the post office, and on the east side, it runs pretty much all the way up to Auto Glass or whatever it's called. So, anybody along there, it's, we know where the sidewalks are. And we actually had maps created at one point showing the-
Now, we go with the fairness issue.
What?
Safety. It's not fairness, it's safety. Do you really want to shovel a sidewalk that forces people to walk out into Route twenty-eight to continue their route down Route twenty-eight? I don't think we want to do that.
I guess I'm just, I'm trying to visualize what you're talking, Mike, as far as, you know, if they shovel the sidewalk, they go into twenty-eight.
Yeah, so if you take Pat Lee's property, the horseshoe.
Yeah, most of that's wide open anyway.
It is. But there is a sidewalk there, and he's going to get a fine for not doing it.
Is the sidewalk on the southerly side or the northerly side?
What side is his business on?
He's on the east, he's on the west side.
He's on the west side. North of his property or south of his property?
North.
It ends south of his property, north of his property.
Oh, no, so towards, towards the North Reading Transportation?
Yes. Yeah.
So, if you-
Clear the sidewalk.
It forces you to walk out into Route twenty-eight to continue on your path down Route twenty-eight.
Southbound.
Southbound.
Southbound, yeah, going southbound. So, if you're going southbound, you hit there, and there's no more, there's no longer sidewalk, and therefore, it's snowing, you go out. And in fact, I think that the Joker's Wild has that type of situation, and in the Joker's Wild, a police cruiser sideswiped a pedestrian walking in the street at night.
Yeah, well, we should be careful, because we're throwing, we're striking on our own location, because we own the piece of property in front of Joker's Wild, North of Joker's Wild. So, we should be taking care of our own property. So, we should be kind of careful about, you know, how we're handling that.
Well, it seems to me that we have a couple, I mean, I think we need to enforce it, we need to go forward. We've missed a bunch of people now, we've got to give them a notice and give them the same seven days. It would seem to me, when this is all over, we need to have a clear definition of what sidewalks need to be plowed going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I really would like to propose to the board to consider not any fines this year. I hate to prolong it, but I think we need to allow the snow to dissipate, allow the DPW director and the police department to work together to build a realistic plan for what needs to be plowed for sidewalks that are safe. And those areas that we don't want plowed, because they enter people or they exit people off into an unsafe area, we should tell those businesses actually not to plow those areas. I think that's-
The only issue though, Michael, is the fairness for the people that responded appropriately initially, and the ones who responded to the knock on the door.
Right.
You're now giving a bye to the ones who didn't comply.
Well, even before that, Steve, there were people that shoveled the driveways, their old sidewalks.
No, they didn't.
Even before we sent notices out.
They did. No, that's what I mean, for those that complied. And then those who complied upon the knock on the door, and now we're proposing, proposals being made to forget about it.
Right.
And what would cause them not to clear it now? I mean, there's still a lot of snow out there.
There is.
There's still a lot of snow.
I don't disagree, there is.
And we still need to get it cleared.
And you know what? The town has done a great job. They've done a super job. Now, I must ask, who does, I'm assuming the town does in front of the old Stop and Shop area?
No, no, I believe there's no other property owner.
Really? Then great. And that's a vacant building.
Well, it comes back to, I think, Michael's right, is that going forward, if a business that is going to have their site, their parking lot plowed, they've got to have that on their list.
Right.
And if people plowed after the first storm, and after the second storm, we wouldn't be in the mess.
No, my only point is that there may be some particular properties that we don't want them to shovel that sidewalk. That's my only point. And just because I think we're creating an unsafe environment, forcing people that are on that particular sidewalk out into Route twenty-eight to continue their path in the southern direction, so.
Well, it gets back to the issue of identifying what are real sidewalks that need to be-
Shovel them off, that's fine. I just want to move on.
So, what are the wishes of the board? Let's move on here. Do we continue on the path that we voted a week ago or two weeks ago?
Yes.
And if so, then fines are going to be sent out?
Yes.
Is that the consensus of the board at this point? I see two nods, and I'm in support of sending the notices out at this point.
I think there needs to be, I think there needs to be a consistent date that we're going to be doing it from. Because again, some people had more notice than others, and some people just getting notified.
But that happens anyway.
No, I know that, but I just think if-
So, you're suggesting that the fines don't go into effect until-
Whatever it is.
Seven days from-
Seven days from tomorrow, whatever it is.
From yesterday, or whenever the-
The notifications went out.
That's contradictory to the bylaw.
Yeah, but we're- We've been contradicting the bylaw, and I think, I think what we need to do is, we need to amend the bylaw, if it's going to be maintained, amend the bylaw to allow the board the flexibility to waive it at certain points in time.
At the end of April.
You know, waive it, waive the time periods, you know? Give the board some flexibility to react to mother nature.
So, what are the wishes of the board here, we're all over the place again?
That's why I think we need to get our act together.
So, Steve, you're proposing that-
If we're going to impose the fines, truly impose the fines, I think, I think we need to, I think we need to drop dead date, as of this date going forward, there's going to be fines imposed, you know? And that way, you know, we will have sent the message.
All right, so let's pick a date so that everybody knows exactly-
A little bit more time to comply.
When, if the snow isn't removed by March what? March nineteenth or March seventeenth?
I believe that we have a pretty good understanding of what's left to be done as of this morning, so I would suggest a fair date would be Tuesday, March seventeenth.
St. Patrick's Day.
St. Patrick's Day. Good. The snow is-
Snow will be gone by then.
If it's not removed by St. Patrick's Day, we will find those business owners that haven't removed the snow from the sidewalks.
I don't know.
Can I have a motion to that effect? Do we hear a second?
Sure, I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
For the purpose of discussion. When the bylaw was created, that took it out of our hands and put it into the police department's hands to enforce, okay? The reason why we became involved is because it wasn't being enforced.
It was difficult to comply with, right?
So, our responsibility is to tell the police department to enforce the bylaw. That's the only vote we have. We don't have the luxury, really, of changing the law. That's not our-
Right, but we did allow some slack, a lot of slack, and then we voted to send notices out, and then we find out that we missed a whole bunch. So, I think Steve is right, it's unfair to start fining one group where another group gets a free ride for another seven days or whatever. So, I think at this point-
Be concerned about when we did it.
If we vote just to say, effective on St. Patrick's Day, if your sidewalk isn't plowed, isn't cleaned, you're going to get fined, period, and ended. There's a drop-dead date. It's not seven days from the time you get your notice, it's March seventeenth.
And that's prior.
And let's move on.
And that's prior.
Okay, I mean, vote as you may, but I won't support that.
Well, I don't think I heard a second. I heard a second for discussion.
I second it.
All right. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, four to one. Next. That'd be St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the board's feedback with regard to this.
Really? But we need to, we need to make a change to the bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things, a couple of things I do think I need to say. The first is that I haven't, I wasn't here, obviously, for previous conversation with the Chamber of Commerce, but I can tell you that at least the executive director of the Chamber now recognizes that this is an issue, and that the system certainly is one that doesn't seem to be necessarily working as well as it could. So, I think there's a recognition that there needs to be attention paid to this in the long term. The second thing is, I have had conversation with the police chief, and I do think that revisions to this bylaw are in order, and that it's our intention to make recommendations of the board to make revisions, or propose revisions at the June town meeting, that might get this more aligned, perhaps, with pedestrian travel patterns, and making it, making the impact be more effective so that when business owners are removing snow from their location, they know that they're doing so as part of a larger plan to promote pedestrian travel within town safely, rather than it being piecemeal as it is right now by virtue of the fact of where the sidewalks are located. So, I mean, we certainly have heard that and hope to have a solution that the board will see as useful for the town meeting. So, thank you. Secondly, as I noted, I had a copy of a regional public health forum presentation that the health director and I attended in the town of Hamilton last month. I intend to continue discussions with the board of health as we look towards potentially regionalizing services provided in the health department. And again, as the board is aware, I started that discussion with the chairman and the health director of the board of health in January. Third, the departments have submitted, and the town has, the departments have assembled, and the town has submitted data to support the state's most recent request for cumulative costs related to the January blizzard and the three major February storms. This was in addition to the request for damage assessment for the blizzard only. The total cost to the town for all four storms, including snow and ice removal, wear and tear on equipment through the state and federal formulas, rooftop snow removal, protective measures taken by the police and fire departments, and school department expenses, was one million one hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents. That number does not reflect our snow and ice deficit for the current fiscal year, because it includes the costs that weren't actual dollars expended, but rather were reflected in the wear and tear on town, on equipment, or otherwise. So, again, we continue to monitor this closely. Representative Jones had given the town a heads-up that this might be coming, and of course, it did materialize very shortly thereafter. We were ready to answer the call on short order. So, I'd like to thank the public works director, Dick Carnavale, and Liz Poveo for their efforts to pull that together and make sure that we were able to submit the information. Not sure whether it'll lead to a certification and approval of disaster being declared for reimbursement, but we certainly at least are doing our part to make sure that every cost is accounted for and that we're contributing towards the total extent of the disaster for the area this winter. I included in the report a copy of the town meeting schedule, as well as warrant article requests that were issued to departments, committees, boards, and commissions. The deadline for submission of warrant articles is this coming Monday, March sixteenth, and we'll pass a preliminary version of the listing of warrant articles by the board at the March twenty-third meeting.
Mr., before you go on, did you have a quick question?
Just about snow and ice, to make sure I have the number correctly, correct. We had financial planning team meeting, and I believe the number we've spent with projections, estimates, is it one point three million?
Yeah, he was listing what was submitted to FEMA, right?
Right. I'm asking from a town perspective.
If I recall, the finance director had stated that the number of the deficit was approximately eight fifty or eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And then, on top of that, was what we had expended already within the budget, which was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the approved budget. I believe that that's the number, but I can confirm that.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Twelve million fifty.
One million fifty thousand, plus or minus.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a big number. Okay, I just wanted to get confirmation of that. Thank you. Just to explain the process, they allow you to collect on every single vehicle throughout-
The wear and tear.
That's being, that's being, so they give you a-
And the number that Liz talked about is, it didn't include wear and tear.
Right. No, I know that, that's what I'm trying to, just make sure I remember with the number, because we have, we're going to have a free cash issue.
Yeah.
If you get seventy-five percent of that number.
It still will, but it's not as bad.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Continue.
Yeah, as was discussed at the February twenty-eighth budget meeting, the town is preparing to submit an application for a federal youth substance abuse grant. The amount is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and Amy Luckowitz, along with the police chief, have been working diligently over the past couple of weeks to put this application together. It's for a minimum of five, up to a potential extension for ten years, if awarded. The award would take place in September. In the Dropbox folder for tonight's meeting, there's a file entitled CIT Youth Substance Grant Brief, and I'll just refer you to it for the, those watching the meeting at home. There are a series of strategies that are identified to be implemented with regard to it, I'll just read them very quickly. Strengthening the coalition membership, which would be a coalition to prevent substance abuse amongst youth in North Reading. Increasing the involvement of the full range of community organization available to address the issue. Providing leadership in the community related to youth substance abuse prevention. Providing information and training to the community. Changing the consequences of marijuana and prescription drug use. Reducing access to marijuana and prescription drug to use. And working to change community norms. So, again, I'll just note that this is a youth substance abuse grant, and it's been identified that these are the areas which youth are most vulnerable. The chief, I think, has made a discussion, made a compelling presentation at the budget meeting and in the past of the connection that those substances have to the current ongoing opiate crisis that the region and the state are facing. But it's a strategy intended to catch youth that are from the early end of the spectrum, and I think that we have a good proposal together. I included a copy of the budget for the grant. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in federal funding that's requested, along with a non-federal match of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That can be in kind, and the majority of that funding would be in kind. The ratio goes from one to one in years one through five, to the town needing to cover a hundred and fifty percent, and then ultimately, the total cost should the grant go away in the later years of the grant. And that's reflected in the match number that's identified here in this presentation. So, again, I think we do have a compelling case to put forth, and I'd like to recognize the work that Amy, the police chief, and the entire community impact team have put together to position us, really, over the past two years, Mr. Chairman, as I look to you for confirmation.
It's been going on for two years.
Yeah, to be ready to make this application. I think that we are primed to put our best foot forward, and hopefully, we'll see success when the grant decisions are made in September later this year.
The town of Wakefield has this grant, and Amy's been working, getting a lot of information in her communications with people there, and she's put blood and sweat into putting this, pulling this whole thing together, with the full support of the community impact team.
Again, another piece of information I have, this morning, the police chief, actually this afternoon, the police chief issued an updated community advisory relative to the Twentieth Century Fox movie production that's been in town over the past week or so. They'll resume filming on March eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth at the Winter Street location. Again, there will be traffic, the road will be closed to traffic, beginning at nine AM through four PM. Local residents and businesses will be able to access Winter Street via Park Street. Emergency vehicles and school buses will be able to access Winter Street via Park Street as well. Signage is in place, I'm sure everybody has seen it around town, but again, for the community to be aware, there will be another round of road closures. The production company and the police department continue to work closely together. They've kind of, things have kind of been back and forth, but as of this point in time, the Fox's, Twentieth Century Fox's use of Ipswich River Park is back on for staging purposes, so there will be some equipment set up. But again, we do not anticipate that it'll have an impact on the public's ability to use the portions of the park that can be accessed, given the amount of snow on the ground at this point in time. But I just wanted to note that for the community, we'll be putting this up on the town website and I believe it's already up on the police department's social media presence.
I have a question regarding, I think you announced earlier that they were gonna make a donation.
That's correct.
To the Community Impact Team. Have they done that or...?
They've contacted me to arrange a delivery and I've been trying to refer them to come to a selectman's meeting to potentially make that presentation. So my hope is to have representation here on the 23rd. But I believe the check has been cut. It's just a matter of it being delivered. They'll also be making a contribution, again, as I referenced, $3,000 to North Reading Parks and Recreation and then paying for any hard costs associated with the preparation of the park for use, including snow and ice.
I assume they're obligated to clean that site up when they're done?
Yes.
Are they gonna leave the signage that they put up on the building?
Oh, in terms of Mr. Heffron's property, that I'm not sure. We're not a party to that.
Probably take Santa Claus down, but, you know.
And then just a final note, I know that there were questions with regard to the governor's budget being released on Wednesday of last week. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you wanted to speak to that or if you'd like me to make comments, just broad comments.
From the immediate town impact, there's a, Chapter 70 is up $50,000 and unrestricted, unrestricted local aid is up $56,000. So on the revenue plan that we've been working with for the budget, we hit that level funded, so it's an additional amount of money. I think there's...
I can note a couple of other things if you'd like.
Special, yeah, sped money, I think, is down a little tiny bit for the school department and seemed to think that was a big issue. And I haven't gone through the details of some of the other accounts, but those are the two biggies.
Yes, so the veterans benefits, we see an increase based on performance and claim and benefits provided of $10,952 and that's reimbursement that we're being forecasted by the state for next fiscal year. We had a slight decrease in exemptions for blind elderly and surviving spouses of approximately $700. We saw a $522 reduction in public library aid. That would put it at $15,126. And the aid for state-owned land, which is approximately $35,000, $36,000 on an annual basis, is actually funded at $0 for next fiscal year.
And cherry sheet assessments went up.
That's correct. Assessments, assessments increased $10,310 in terms of a bottom line.
A piece of that was MBTA. I don't remember the rest of it.
That's correct, yes. Actually, most of it was MBTA, if I'm not mistaken. So that's just an update as to where we're at. I mean, we had conservative projections and we know we're certainly within the lines at this point in time. I think that the state administration, as they stated at the MMA annual meeting that some of the members were at, is trying to hold the line in terms of its proposals. We look forward to hearing more with regard to what the legislature's appetite is after receiving review on this.
So the town administrator has, his recommended budget is balanced based on the revenue before the governor's numbers. That's before us considering some of the priorities that we might have to put some of those items back in the budget. The school department is currently in the gap of somewhere, as the last meeting, a little over $700,000. So we'll be working on coming up with some way of helping them out as we go forward. Not anticipating that helping them out is reducing town services, but we'll be looking at those numbers on Wednesday, that Wednesday meeting.
And they are actually having a budget hearing?
They're having a budget hearing, uh...
March.
I know, I'm away.
Eighteenth, I believe.
Yeah, I'm not back yet.
Yep, but they're having their budget hearing 18th, 6 o'clock in the old, in the current middle school in Mr. Bernhardt's office.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report for this evening.
And I would appreciate if some member of the board could get to that meeting.
Yeah, I'll be there.
One or more.
And I said that's 3/18 in the, in the middle school?
Yep.
Which is the old high school.
Oh, the old high school, okay.
It's the current middle school.
Yeah, it's in the middle school.
Yeah, I said current middle school.
Either way, current middle school.
I was trying to be very...
Politically correct, yeah.
Anything else, Michael?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so let's see if we can get through all the new business quickly. Mr. O'Leary.
Just briefly, I just read with interest, without getting into the details, the Economic Development Self-Assessment Tool. Not a lot of new news or anything unexpected, but it's, it is a good tool to have, at least now memorialized, something to work from Economic Development Committee, something to work from there and...
Yeah, and when you're looking at the reds and the greens, you know, you get, and you're comparing it with other communities that they've surveyed, you can also get a sense that, you know, the way, you know, the way we know our community, it almost pops out as that we would be scaled that way.
Right, that's what I was saying. I wasn't overly surprised, but it's a good document to have, to work off of and start working, bolstering our strengths and working on our weaknesses.
And you'll be scheduled, working on the schedule for them to come back.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And because we had such a large turnout of a business community, you know, we're trying to schedule it in a location where we can accommodate those people that are still interested in coming back and hearing the results because they're the ones that participated.
And I exchanged email with Karen today and it's proposed maybe April 10th.
Okay, great.
We'll get that confirmed. That's a Friday.
But, yeah, great tool.
It'll be, it'll be a Friday, I guess, that was.
That's who we're shooting for because that's what the person was.
That was the preference of the business community, those involved.
Anything else, Steve?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Okay. Maybe I should walk, stand back here.
Move your phone.
Move the iPad. Oh, the phone, it was the phone, yeah.
Okay, in any event, I don't really have much to say, but I do have a question for the TA on the memorandum regarding the warrants. Just so I can understand here, the last sentence says, "It is important all warrant articles be submitted in proper legal form," which I can understand that, "after consultation with town council." Now, is that to the general public or is that to us? If someone wanted to submit a warrant article, I know that they can come before the board and say they want to have a warrant article.
No, what they do is they file a petition.
Right.
Get signatures.
That's correct.
And it automatically goes and we have no say.
Right, okay.
And generally, we would assist them in making sure that the motion will fit within and make it work.
And generally, after the date, the deadline date for the type of submittals, if we're dealing with, the school committee came to us with an article or we as a board decide we're gonna put an article in, we can do that after that date. Our deadline is the date of submitting the warrant.
This is warrant articles is the 16th.
That's for the general public.
That's for the general public.
But again, the board can do it right up to, we publish.
Right up to the time we sign the warrant.
We've been known to do that.
So if someone wanted to, if they didn't have the signatures or anything like that, but they came up to the board, they can come to the board and ask.
Of course.
Right? And if they get a no, then they need the signatures, then they need the petition. Okay, correct?
After the, after the deadline, only after the deadline. All they need is 10 signatures, does it?
Right, right.
So if it's after the deadline, the only way an article will get on the warrant is if the board approves it.
Right, right, so by the 16th, someone would have to do that. But it's, it's a, they don't, they don't have the ability to go to town council.
No, no. This is only for departments, boards, committees, and commissions.
Okay, okay, so they can write it as being in the proper format, but they can, okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's it, I'm done.
Mr. Colley?
Just one quick item. I want to congratulate Mr. Chuck Carrucci for being named Person of the Year by the Reading, North Reading Chamber of Commerce for the town of North Reading. So deserving for all the time and effort he puts into this town, so I'm just happy to see that and just want to comment on that.
Recycling, this seems to be an inconsistency with the pickup lately. I've been getting a lot of feedback from residents, I'm not sure if other board members have been receiving it, but is there, have you heard some issues? Is there an issue with our recycling in town?
I'm aware that they were, that services were certainly delayed during the weeks of the storms, but I'm aware that there seems to be one particular area where there's been a chronic issue.
Yeah.
So I'll speak with the Public Works Director to see if we can get an answer from JRM.
Yeah, maybe we can update the public at the next meeting.
Sure.
Certainly apologies to those residents and making them, at least making...
Early on, didn't they have some equipment problem though, too?
They were short equipment during the storms, yeah.
During the storms because it had acquired too, other people were.
Meeting dates, in your report, you have a meeting date for April with question marks, so I don't know if we wanted to discuss that tonight. I assume that was in there tonight for a discussion. That would be the April 20th meeting, whether we wanted to have that or not. And I know that's the beginning of April vacation week, so we don't have anything scheduled, but I see you have it in here as a question mark.
Well, the, the issue is that we're, we'll have finished the review of the town budgets with the department heads on the 23rd. And then we've got to get into getting, reviewing that, determining, you know, what we really want to approve. The town administrator's made his recommendations. There are some things that we've heard. I've heard some concerns about certain things. We need to look at that and we have to, we also have, you know, given that, then we have to figure out how that's all gonna fit. We're gonna be dealing with the warrant articles and...
So the only reason I'm asking is that is vacation week, so I won't take any, I won't take that day away from, you know, I'll make sure I'm here. But if we're not gonna meet, I'd like to know.
Well, we have a meeting on the 23rd, so if we meet on the 6th and the 20th...
We have the 23rd, the 6th, and then the 27th is the next one after that.
And then in May, we have 1, 2, 3, 4 again.
Yep, okay, so I just want...
So what you're, you would like us to schedule a meeting other than the, that we go to the 20th?
No, no, I'm wide open to do it now. I haven't made any final plans.
No.
You have a question mark in this. I was assuming you were bringing it up tonight.
I have it down as the 20th.
For us to schedule it. And if we're gonna do it on the 20th, then I'm gonna mark it down in my schedule.
We want to confirm that we can meet on the 6th and the 20th. If everyone can meet, then we're all set.
Well, we have the 6th and the 27th already booked. The 6th and the 27th.
I have the 20th, I didn't have the 27th.
The 20th, I believe, is a legal holiday. We wouldn't be able to meet.
Okay, so, but we, we have booked the 6th for a BOs meeting and then April 27th is our special board of select meeting for budget hearings. This is in your meeting package.
All right, so this is the way I would handle it. We have a meeting, I know, we can't meet on the 20th, but you're concerned about the whole week.
Yeah, just let me know what day. If we're gonna meet at all.
Well, the question is, will we need to meet or not? That's up in the air at this point. Because we're meeting for the budget hearing on the 27th, right?
Yes.
That's fine. We can wait till, that we meet on the 23rd, give people more time to think about it.
And we're definitely meeting on the 6th. And we couldn't, we can't meet on the 20th anyway, so it'd have to be the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, or the week before, if necessary.
Well, the week after, we already have a plan, so.
Or the week after, yeah.
Maybe there's just no need to meet that week. I just want to get a confirmation, that's all.
Well, right now, we...
I'm in favor of not meeting, though.
All right, so we'll leave it open until we get closer to...
Okay, I'll stay flexible.
What's on our, what's on our agenda, okay? Anything else?
Yes. In the IT budget, I know we didn't go through it today, but are we making a commitment to improve the website? Are we making, because I know we've made it.
That's already in progress, right?
That's correct. It was a commitment made in this year's budget that is underway. There is, I believe, a model that's been worked on and developed that's under preliminary review for implementation and I believe the plan was to implement later this spring. But that's funded and is underway.
Okay, because, you know, you have some really brilliant college kids out there that could use an internship and if we need another peer hand, maybe this is the time for us to...
Well, it's...
You're under the current operating budget to bring an internship to kind of help us get that...
You know, Michael, the, the website is managed by Town Hall.
Virtual Town Hall.
Yeah, but we do the content.
Yes, the content, right, so...
And it's always been the issue is finding people's time and availability.
Well, there's been two issues. One issue is having the staff that needs to be putting input trained to load the information. And then there's, there's been enhancements to the, to the overall program that we're paying more money for more features.
I mean, what you're gonna see is it's gonna become standard operating procedure for departments to post things on their websites versus now it's kind of centralized. It goes through one point in time. The new version that the finance director and the IT director have put together with Virtual Town Hall gives us the capacity to have departments do this on a regular basis. I mean, it really is part of our regular workflow at this point in time. I know it is for myself.
Yeah.
But that's the model that we're moving to, so we don't have the bottleneck.
I was just drawing out there that you start hearing more and more kids looking for internships and if we have a need and there's some really pretty brilliant kids in this area that can do some great things in this area, maybe it's something we can, we can consider under this current operating budget to get it done. But if you think you've got it and it's gonna happen in the spring, then...
I'll speak with the finance director. She's kind of been running tasks on that, but I'll certainly speak with her.
Because these kids could use some more internships out there. It's, you know, they made this change in the law for internships and it's really caused a big issue. So if we can get something and provide an opportunity for someone, I think we should try to do it. Because we've all been talking about this website for a long time and I'd like to see it get done before the start of the new, next fiscal year. That's all I have. Thank you.
I too want to congratulate Chuck Carrucci. I think he's worked real hard for this town in one way, one capacity or another, in a lot of capacities and I, I may have told you this or not, but I got a call from him one Saturday and he says, "Do you have a key to Town Hall?" I scratched my head. What do you need a key to Town Hall for? He says, "Well, I'm down to Stop &amp; Shop and I'm collecting food for the food pantry." Now, with all the things he has to do, he cannot say no and he's out there. So I said, "Okay, I'll come down and give you my key." I drive down to Stop &amp; Shop and he's all by himself. And, you know, I mean, this is the kind of guy he is, you know? He just doesn't know how to say no and he's always willing to step up. He's a well-deserved. Michael and I and Chief Murphy and our services director visited the State House this afternoon and we met with Senator Tarr and Brad Jones, who is having surgery tomorrow, so I want to wish him well. He broke his ankle.
Right.
And my understanding it was a compound fracture, not a compound fracture, a fracture that went through the flesh. So he's having surgery for it. He was rolling around the State House in a wheelchair, but...
Motorized, though.
Manual.
Oh, good question. I think it was self-infelt. Anyway, we did meet with, primarily not to talk about the budget, but we talked about CIT initiatives and our concerns over heroin abuse and, you know, what's going on not only in North Reading, but throughout the state and communities. So it was a good meeting and I just want to let the board know that we did get an invitation. We went in for that. There is a...
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we initiated the discussion and they were certainly well, it was well-received, but it was the chief who initiated the conversation and it was, again, well-received.
Yes, thank you. And then I think Mrs. Bailey mentioned that the CIT sponsored for one of our groups, the Life of a Teenager. And there was over 400 people that signed up, but there weren't that many, there was over 250, I think, that came. There was a little competition with, I think... You went to the hockey game instead, so...
It was supposed to be a divide and conquer, so...
But I tell you, it was...
It didn't work out that well.
That was shocking.
It was a great program and the, I think out of it, we have a lot of anxiety, as Masi said, and there were a number of people that asked questions at the end and you can get a tone of what, you know, what might be going on in the community. So I thought that was very well-attended and thanks to Amy and the whole team for putting that together. I think that's all I have. I'm...
Sorry to prolong the discussion. I have one more.
No, it's okay.
It's good news, though. Again, as you mentioned, we met with Representative Jones and Senator Tarr this afternoon. Representative Jones reported to me on Friday and again, updated me again today when we were at that meeting at the end, that he... were at that meeting at the end, that he's expressed to legislative leadership that the JT Berry property is a priority for him. He's expressed that he expects it to be moved out of the House of Representatives. He essentially managed to orchestrate it so that it was able to bypass an entire cycle through a committee and go directly to the House Ways and Means Committee, which certainly keeps this on the fast track with a projection to be out of the House of Representatives within the week and over to the Senate for final action. So certainly, I know we all appreciate his efforts to keep this moving for the town. It's an important thing for the town moving forward, but I want to make sure the board and the community were aware of that effort. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
That's great news, that is great news.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we're gonna go into executive session?
Not on the agenda.
Yes, it is.
It is?
It is on the agenda.
It'll be very brief.
I was told it was gonna be brief.
Very brief.
Okay.
Sure you.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter...
Purposes of what?
What?
It's for collective bargaining strategy and litigation strategy.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining and litigation strategy. Such discussions in open session will have a detrimental, detrimental impact on the town, and to admit the following, there's no one to be admitted, and to return to open session for adjournment.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yule, second one by Mr. O'Leary.